I would like to call to order the June 17th, 2024 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome, everyone. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Paul, it's a ten-week cycle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go to Scanning.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence for our invocation tonight. Commissioner Shu is recovering from some surgery, so he is not with us in person tonight, but he is with us virtually on the screen. Commissioner Shu, can you hear us okay? Looks like he's frozen. So can you hear us okay, Commissioner Shu?
Yes, I can. I was just getting ready to text Todd, but I'm okay now.
Okay. Well, if you run into any problems, please, please let us know. First up on our agenda is the approval or correction of the minutes. You all have a copy of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or are there any corrections? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next up is approval of the agenda. You all have a copy of the agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 17? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes as well. We move now to recognitions and presentations. First up from Active Living in Parks, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Aging Award, and we're happy to be joined by Jill Silverman for that presentation. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name's Jill Zimmerman Lawrence. I'm the Deputy Director for the Division of Aging at the Department of Health and Human Services. It's an honor to be here today to recognize Cabarrus County Active Living in Parks, led by Londa Strong, as the 2023 Ernest Messer Award winner. This award recognizes a community or a community-based organization that has excelled in addressing the needs of its older citizens. Now, just a little bit I'd love to share about the great work that y'all actually are doing, as well as your Parks Department, if I can have some time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ernest B. Messer was a champion for aging in the North Carolina General Assembly and the former Director of the Division of Aging for the Department of Health and Human Services between 1981 and 1985. He's known for establishing the Legislative Study Commission on Aging in the General Assembly, which advocated on behalf of the interest of older adults for many years where favorable legislation happened for seniors. On May 2nd, 2023, the Governor of North Carolina signed Executive Order 280 to encourage state and local communities to work together to make North Carolina an age-friendly state. And your community is really doing just that. Like Mr. Messer, the Cabarrus County Active Living in Parks and your county commissioners, all of you all, are demonstrating your commitment to addressing the needs of older adults. Like many other communities, you all provided essential classes and activities for older adults, like Matter of Balance and Chronic Disease Management, that will help individuals live longer and healthier lives. And this past year, Active Living in Parks worked diligently with you all to purchase land and build two new libraries and active living centers. The Afton Library and Active Living Center and the Mount Pleasant Library and Active Living Center at Virginia Foil Park are currently under construction and will provide senior programming and support in two areas of the county. In addition to prioritizing the need, your community has been so thoughtful in where the resources will be and how they will be constructed to address barriers in this unique population. Having these two amenities under the same roof helps alleviate transportation issues for older adults seeking and brings all these services available at one location. These facilities and dedicated staff will accommodate the growing 50 and better population, providing a safe place to exercise, socialize, and recreate today and for a long time into the future. As I read over the nomination for your community, I was struck by the way community members spoke about your program. Myra Baumgartner, your Chairperson for the Cabarrus County Active Living Advisory Council, wrote the following. "The support offered by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners reflects their confidence and appreciation of the work done by the Active Living and Parks Department. It is apparent that these officials recognize the importance of the active living centers to the seniors of Cabarrus County. To many in the senior community, the centers serve as a lifeline, providing the opportunity to exercise, socialize, and recreate. The innovative concept of combining the active living center and libraries will prove to be even more valuable resource to our seniors. The fact that the libraries and active living centers will be together provides a wonderfully unique opportunity for multi-generational programming that was previously unattainable. It is so encouraging to see and hear the excitement among the senior community as to the possibilities these new centers will provide." You all are really on the front foot for North Carolina as North Carolina looks to become age-friendly, as age-friendly as possible. I hope y'all will share the successes that you have here and share with your other county commissioners, as well as Parks and Recs Department, about the great collaboration and the great impact you'll make. So, Londa, will you please join me here? On behalf of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Aging, it's with great pride that I would like to present you with the 2023 Ernest Messer Award.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I was going to say, obviously, thank you, but it's my understanding that Mr. Messer hired Margot Rayner back in the 80s, and that was the start of North Carolina Senior Games.
I think that's right.
Yeah. And we need to see more of you all in there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations, Londa and team. We are very proud of the work that you do for the community as a whole, and certainly with the senior games and the aging population, and look forward to many good things to come in the future. Thank you. Okay, next up, also from Active Living in Parks, is Parks and Recreation Month Proclamation, and we're happy to welcome Londa back to the podium with that item.
And you will be most happy that you do not have to read that, nor do I. We have Communications has done a great video. July is always Park and Recreation Month, and of course, we have Park, Recreation, and Active Living Centers, and we are very pleased with what communication came up, so I hope you enjoy it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Cabarrus County.
Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks.
Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's.
Whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles.
Whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education.
Whereas Park and Recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education, are critical to childhood development. And
Whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction.
Whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community.
Whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change.
Whereas Our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors.
Whereas The U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Whereas Cabarrus County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources.
Now
Therefore
Be resolved by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners.
That July
Is recognized as Park
and Recreation Month
in Cabarrus County.
Whereas
That's the winner. Very good.
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. I think that deserves a round of applause. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to adopt as presented? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to a proclamation for the 60th anniversary of Roan Cabarrus Community College. As a member of their Board of Trustees, I'm happy to read this proclamation. Proclamation celebrating the 60th anniversary of Roan Cabarrus Community College. Whereas Roan Cabarrus Community College has been a catalyst for higher education and workforce development in Roan County since its establishment in 1963 as the Roan Industrial Education Center. And whereas Roan Cabarrus Community College, the first multi-campus college in North Carolina, now serves more than 20,000 students each year, upholding an open-door policy for all, fostering a sense of belonging, and providing accredited public higher education opportunities to a growing student body. And whereas Roan Cabarrus Community College partners with Cabarrus County Schools and Kannapolis City Schools through opportunities in career and technical education and career and college promise, providing high school students with opportunities to gain college credits and career skills, thereby enhancing their educational and career prospects. And whereas students at Roan Cabarrus Community College have consistently achieved excellence by winning awards at both state and national levels through participation in programs such as Work-Based Learning, Skills USA, Future Business Leaders of America, and the Student Government Association. And whereas Roan Cabarrus Community College has further enhanced its position as the provider of the largest public service training program among community colleges in North Carolina, training nearly 5,500 individuals in 2024. And whereas the closure of Pilate Techs in Kannapolis in 2003 marked the largest single-day job loss in the southeast United States, leaving nearly 5,000 residents of Cabarrus and Roan Counties suddenly unemployed and prompting a swift and collaborative response led by Roan Cabarrus Community College, local government, and workforce development agencies to provide training to individuals and hope to those affected. And whereas the college is a critical partner in workforce development, offering essential short-term training programs that support local industries, including the notable customized training program for Philip Morris in 1981, the largest in the state's history, and the recent partnership with Eli Lilly and Company to develop talent for the emerging life sciences industry sector. And whereas the college's commitment to innovation is demonstrated by its flagship presence on the North Carolina Research Campus since 2010, the Dr. Carol S. Spalding Advanced Technology Center in 2020, and extensive engineering and information technology opportunities. And whereas in 2015, Roan Cabarrus Community College was recognized nationally as one of the top 10, excuse me, digital community colleges by the Center for Digital Education for its exceptional use of digital technologies to improve services for students, faculty, staff, and the community. And whereas the college has demonstrated its commitment to offering high-quality online instruction by achieving National Quality Matters, QM certifications, making it the community college with the most QM-certified courses in the state as of August 2022, ensuring excellence in the development and delivery of online education to over 50% of the college's credit students. And whereas in 2023, the Aspen Institute named Roan Cabarrus Community College as one of the 150 institutions eligible to compete for the $1 million Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence, recognizing the college's high and improving levels of student success and equitable outcomes. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed 2024 as the year to celebrate the 60th anniversary of Roan Cabarrus Community College in Cabarrus County, and urge all citizens to join in, recognizing and honoring the college for its outstanding contributions in shaping our community. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion to adopt as read?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes unanimously. We move now to informal public comments. Each person, as we call out your name, will come to the podium so that you can be heard from the microphone, identify yourself with your name and your place of residence, and you will have three minutes to speak. If you have not finished speaking, when the buzzer goes off, we ask that you finish the sentence that you are speaking and move away from the podium so that we can allow everybody an opportunity. Our first card is from Jerry Anderson.
Jerry Anderson, Kannapolis, North Carolina. Saturday night, eight years ago, DSS and Kannapolis Police come to my house and took away my child. And I asked them why. I got the recording, and all they would tell me, "You didn't get a phone call?" No, I didn't get the phone call. What's the reason? Nobody told me. Eight years I've been trying to get the reason. Last week, I talked to the two agencies involved, Kannapolis Police and DSS, and I asked them both. Neither knew had a reason for taking my child. DSS over here, I talked to this one young lady over here, and I asked her, "Why'd you take my child?", and it just goes quiet. They did invite me to come up and see the changes that were happening, so this didn't happen again. Well, you know, I ain't breaking bread. My daughter's dead, and my other child's gone for no reason. Nobody has an answer. Mike, you did an investigation, and I asked you, I had questions, and you locked the door. I've never found out why my child was taken. Anybody had a child taken out of their house by DSS niece know why? And that's crazy what you're doing to me and not letting my family know why she was taken. David Goldberg became the best to tell me, and he's gone. He said, "Did she move? You don't take a child on an assumption or anything else like that." Now, I was bribed by your friend, Daryl Hennick, he said you was his friend, that he would get me the answer. Bad traffic stop, he wanted me to keep my mouth quiet. He said, "You keep your mouth quiet, I have two people, maybe three people that worked at DSS, and we'll get you the answer." He did three things for me. I said, "I want my free speech up here." He said, "He's my friend, I'll tell him." That happened because that April, you told us we were going to be escorted by the sheriffs. That May, when I come up here, you said nothing. It was perfect. I got my free speech that month. Somebody must have talked to you. But he didn't get me the answer. He can't even get the answer. Till you get me the answer, my child was kidnapped. I want the answer. Anybody would want the answer. Y'all didn't only hide evidence. The judge and the prosecutor worked together at the same law firm and colluded. Not only did you kill my mental child by taking her child, when she was a good girl. Man, I loved my child. She was mental. Y'all won't tell me why you took my child? I'm gonna give you the last few minutes, Mike, to tell me why you took my child. You want to tell me? You're ahead of the place. You investigated. You want to tell me?
Okay, our next card is from Jeter Anderson.
Jeter Anderson, Kannapolis, North Carolina. I'm up here tonight because the two agencies come to our house and removed the child, and both of the agencies can't tell us why the child was removed. And we need to know why that child was removed. But it happened so bad to that child that she couldn't stay with the family or in the family. She had to be removed and adopted out quick. And Jay White had a little something to do with the abuse and exploitation of this situation. He's a big part of the problem with his collusion with the judges and, well, Lynn Shu knows about it because he goes eats with Kristi Wilhelm, and I'm sure they can talk about it. Y'all have nothing to do with this court building, your names on over here, the Cabarrus Courthouse, but wow, y'all have everything. Y'all eat with the judges, and you got your prosecutor that's also a DSS Cabarrus, and he can go over there to his other law office in the court building and use their clerks and stuff for his paperwork. If we got that to take your kid, you're never gonna see your kid again. Once your kid gets removed, you're not gonna get a lawyer, you're not gonna get nobody. He's the complaint man. Your complaints go straight to Mr. White, and you're not gonna get a complaint out. You're not gonna ever see your child again. You're gonna be left looking like me. What happened? Where is she? How is she? You're gonna be tormented, and it's bad. It's not good. And then, needless to say, a mentally ill individual treated how she was. We ain't even got on that topic yet. And this man locks his doors and leaves this veteran asking questions about this child. Our concern for these children is real. We have concerns for these children's well-being. Are these children okay? I heard somebody else complaining about their child being removed up here. Is their children okay? I'm worried about them. Somebody's worried about them, they heard this. And I just hope that some other person can investigate because no questions are answered. Why is our child taken? Mr. Downs, you should know. But you just wanted to shut the door on my dad and me and hope this kept quiet, that we would forget about this in a week. They would be forgotten about in a week. And hopefully, we'll be quiet so we can be forgot about. But no, this is y'all's story, and y'all hurt somebody with your DSS. I call and ask them a question, "Why is our child taken?", and nobody can answer it. That's a shame. That's kidnapping. That's kidnapping. What'd you do with the kid? Well, I'm entitled to think whatever I want to think, and right now, I think Mike Downs has the child doing whatever God knows what with her.
Our next card is from Chris Cranston.
I know you missed me. Good evening to all who came tonight, especially the speakers. It's always an honor to hear you, and I thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I first walked into these chambers a few months ago to talk about property taxes. I've been dismayed at the response of these takers up here ever since. Simultaneously, I have been encouraged by the feedback I've received from the earners of Cabarrus County and from the Tax Assessor's Office itself. While I'm not here to attack any of you personally, I am here to attack your policies and your positions. I want to start with an easy one. Don't spend $15 million on a library in affluent Afton Village. We got way more needy communities around here. You don't think the kids in Afton Village got internet access? You don't think they got enough jobs over there? How about in one of the impoverished areas of Concord, Cabarrus County? Maybe they could use a library and some jobs and some extra. They could use some extra, not Afton Village. It just seems like a waste. They're closing bookstores. We're gonna build a $15 million library in Afton Village. I don't get it. Let's go to page three. So, it's painfully obvious there's two parties fighting over our tax dollars, the earners and the takers. The takers all work together, side by side, day by day. Takers aren't necessarily bad people. In fact, they can be great. That's why we earners volunteer so many dollars to the takers. The takers seem to have forgotten that there is a limit, though, that we will give them, and we seem to have reached that limit. We are not, we earners are almost always out of sight of the takers. We are out in the field, down in the mines. We're in the inner workings of the machine. We keep the revenue flowing. We earners almost always have our noses to the grindstone, focusing on producing and competing against other earners. Occasionally, a earner will take their head and poke it into the world of the takers. There, we are met with a smugness one can't quite describe, but that face says. We are called attention seekers. We just want some TV time. We are called redneck whiners, who aren't educated enough to hold valid opinions at the taker's table. Well, here's an opinion for you. Steve Morris and Lynn Shu have narrowed their vision to the takers, those that they work with, and they're apparently blinded to the fact that everything every taker has came from an earner. Looking at this budget, it's glaringly obvious only the takers are in mind. Stephen Coe has designed a budget that will set extended fuse explosions, timed to go off after he leaves the building. We are watching every move. Werman, you came from a man whose base constitutional rights were your wheelhouse. You used them to name-drop. Now you would deny rights. Well, we need you, Werman, we need your vote. Vote against this tax. Please vote against this tax bill, this budget. That was three? That was three? That doesn't seem right.
Our next card is from May Mack.
My name is Megan Mack, and I live here in Cabarrus County. I'm currently a doctoral student studying community psychology. I mention this because the guiding principles of my field include addressing the root causes of issues, promotion of prevention over treatment, and using evidence and research to guide efforts. This is the perspective through which my comments are made from. In 2021, Cabarrus County conducted a needs assessment and asked our residents what the top issues were that they were facing. The number one issue that citizens reported as a need was housing. Since 2021, this issue has only magnified. In North Carolina, the rates of homelessness in families with children has increased 16% since last year. While I can quote you the statistics, it only takes looking around our community to see that this crisis is here and that it is only getting worse. Ask the teachers, ask the police officers, ask the jails, ask anyone. Housing in Cabarrus County is a critical issue. Can you please tell me why studio apartments are being rented for $1,600 a month? Or why eligibility criteria require folks to be able to prove that they make three times that amount to qualify for a home? What is the root cause of this issue? It is that for-profit corporations are moving into our housing. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we are in the midst of a corporate takeover of our housing. It is being used to generate dividends for stakeholders, while the taxpayer has to foot the bill to pay for the increased costs associated with crisis services, jails, social services, and so much more. Yet, this does nothing to address the primary problem, that housing prices have skyrocketed due to greedy corporations using it to generate lucrative returns for their investors. An alternative that is available is nonprofit, permanently affordable housing. These models include community land trusts, housing cooperatives, and deed-restricted land covenants that ensure the property remains affordable in perpetuity. These models retain the subsidy within the property, and it is estimated that the dollars invested in this type of housing can serve from seven to 10 times more families than more traditional affordable housing approaches. It is an innovative approach that has demonstrated success across the country and across the world. Its primary barrier is upfront capital. Today, I am here to plead with you, Commissioners. Please allocate funding for the low-interest revolving loan account to foster the development of permanently affordable housing for our residents. It is the most cost-efficient method to address the number one need in Cabarrus County, and it will benefit the taxpayer, albeit indirectly. Thank you.
Okay, our next card is from Mark Ortiz.
Good evening, Mark Ortiz, Kannapolis. We just heard three proclamations relating to two departs in Rec and one to Rowan Cabarrus Community College. We heard about how they have helped our community's quality of life and how they helped us recover from the crisis that resulted from the loss of the jobs at Pillow Tex. This was commendable use of public resources and the use of government to address a social problem. Now, some people have ideological objections to the use of public resources to address the housing crisis for some reason. Yet, public resources and the government intervention in the economy, in fact, created the recent housing crisis. The reason that housing has gone up 100 to 150% while groceries and gas have gone up like maybe 25 or 30% has to do with government largesse to Wall Street in the form of purchases of mortgage-backed securities by the Federal Reserve in 2019 and 2020 on a massive scale that constituted the biggest single transfer of wealth by government in recent history. And it was not a transfer downward, it was a transfer upward. And this is where the cash that we get offered when we have a home for sale by some big corporation comes from. Basically, the Federal Reserve printed fiat money and gave it to their buddies in Wall Street, and that's where the capital for these takeovers is coming from. Therefore, it is not inappropriate for government to act to solve this problem. It is unfortunately necessary. I took a look at an article in the Independent Tribune just recently by Mark Clemmons in collaboration with a couple of other people, compared the budget increase this year to recent ones. Actually, it's very small. It's like 3% over 2024. The big increase came last year. So I think it's important to put these things in perspective. If we can intervene to create libraries, parks, community colleges, then we can intervene to do something about this. We should. Thank you.
Our next card is from Jasmine Luter.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just want to, well, first, my name is Jasmine Luter from Kannapolis, and I just wanted to take a brief moment to speak on the critical importance of affordable housing in Cabarrus. Affordable housing isn't just about providing shelter, it's about creating stability, fostering community, and ensuring that every individual and family has a place to call home. We talk about affordable, when we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about more than just building homes. We're talking about giving families a foundation from which they can build better futures. We're talking about giving individuals the opportunity to have better quality lives. And we're talking about providing housing opportunities for those 1,000 homeless children in Cabarrus County. I think you all know how important housing is in this community. I think you know how badly individuals are struggling in this community. And in fact, I know you know because we've talked about it. And as you guys are Commissioners, I urge you to commit yourselves to finding innovative solutions that ensure that everyone has access to safe, decent, and affordable housing. Solutions perhaps like a new revolving door fund that can provide many new homes for the people of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Neil Tally.
My name's Neil Tally, I'm from Kannapolis. And you guys are proposing a 60-cent tax rate, it's a decrease of 14 cents, and revenue neutral, though, according to a guy that was here last week when Commissioner Meesmer was talking to him, came up, I didn't catch his name, said that, that revenue neutral would be 52.65 cents accounting for inflation, but ensure neutral would be 50.65 cents. Now, the county manager said revaluation had gone up 56% from the prior year, from the last year to this last reevaluation. He said it would have to be 57 cents without spending cuts. Why can't you guys cut some of the stupid spending? I don't understand it. We do. Everyone in this room has to cut spending for the way the economy is. And a gentleman that spoke at the end said that if revaluation was 23.33%, then you'd be paying the same with this tax, this 60-cent tax cut. And everyone I've talked to has either gone up 55 to 150% and even more in some cases. I know our house went up 55%. My mom and dad's house went up 98%. If my mom and dad were still alive, you would have just made them homeless because they couldn't afford the tax. They bought this house, my dad came home from the Korean War in 1954, and they lived there all their lives. On top of all of that, the North Carolina Insurance Commission has approved an 8% homeowner's insurance increase, so we're gonna be burdened with that even more. I happen to live inside the Kannapolis City Limits, so I gotta contend with their higher taxes, too. I'm retired, I'm a disabled veteran, and hope to spend my last years comfortably, but now I may have to go back to work to pay these outrageous taxes, and who wants to hire a 67-year-old man? Commissioner Meesmer seems to be the only one that actually cares about the citizens of Cabarrus County. He actually ran figures last meeting and to show what the impact of the cost would be. And I want to thank you for that, Commissioner Meesmer. You give huge back tax breaks to corporations to locate here, and so where does that lost revenue come from? It comes from the taxpayers of Cabarrus County. And that's sending us to the breaking point. Now, I've heard people talk about a need for affordable housing, and I totally 100% agree. Not everyone has a third to a half million dollars to drop on a house. You're making us indentured tax slaves to the government, and it is appalling. Thank you.
Okay, our next card is from Judy Tally.
I live in Kannapolis, and we, I live there with my husband who just spoke, so he, we have a lot of the same issues. The issue I have is here I am again talking about reevaluations. Okay, we, we waited forever for this person, and I'm not gonna call the name, but I don't know if you can see this. I could bring it up. But we didn't know she was coming out. We were told that she did call, but we never got the messages, and Neil always gets the messages. So anyway, we ended up getting this in the mail with no changes whatsoever on our, on our, what our house is worth. And we missed the informal appeal by just a few days. We were told that, you know, it was extended, so it's a better week for us to do it. And then we found out that way that it was informal. And that may be water under the bridge now, but I feel like that impacted our chances because I feel like if we got in under the informal appeal, we would have got a better result. And we don't think that's fair. You know, we were, we were advised to come to the meetings, which we have, which we like to do, we appreciate you hearing our voice. But, and I hope this tax rate does get below 60 cent to more of what Neil talked about because, you know, we're retired, and I make a lot less than I used to, and it's just hard sometimes. So I would, I called this person twice and have not got an answer yet, and I know we're getting down to the wire, so I'm gonna try again tomorrow around noon or 1 o'clock to try to get a hold of her. But I haven't signed this yet because I don't agree to this, this is ridiculous. So that's all I want to say is that I just think, I didn't think we got the same chance that other people got, you know, just because we came in a few days later. And I wanted to speak to the person when they came out to the house, but we didn't know when they were coming, so that's what happened. Just treat us fairly. Thank you.
Can, can we see, can we see that name real quick? Ma'am, can we see that name real quick?
Yeah. Do you want to come back here?
Okay, our next card is from Violet Mitchell.
Okay, I'm Violet Mitchell, 415 Leonard Street, Kannapolis, North Carolina. And Mr. Morris knows how I used to get my point across with Kannapolis City Council by doing little creative ideas, so I've got a short song for you. It's to the, it's a parody to the sooner, to the tune of Ain't No Sunshine by Bill Withers. Ain't no sunshine when we're gone, dum, dum, dum. Cabarrus County taxers just won't leave us alone, dum, dum, dum. Cabarrus County, y'all are trying to kill us all, dum, dum, dum. But we gonna put up a fight if it takes all night, just as hard as we can, dum, dum, dum. While y'all are playing golf, dum, dum, dum. And it just ain't right for the citizens who have to suffer and eventually lose their homes, dum, dum, dum. Okay, now I'll get on with my material. This thing is really serious, and just like the gentleman just spoke about, if his parents were still living, that's one of the things that I put on here about the citizens. People are gonna end up having heart attacks, strokes, and on their death certificate, the cause of death will be Cabarrus County property tax increase is what killed them. And it's not our fault that these big developers are coming in, just like in my community. Every little piece of land, they're snatching up, they putting apartments, condos on Highway 3, going to Walmart, they done cleared all that land off, I guess those gonna be apartments. But y'all really need to consider what it's doing to the citizens because just like the gentleman was saying, okay, I'm 67 years old as well, and I'm out doing scrapping, taking metal to black welders to try to make, you know, ends meet, because with the taxes being so high, even with them giving me that Homestead Act, with the property taxes and my vehicle taxes, I'm still gonna end up paying like $3,000. And it just ain't right. It just ain't right. And that's all I got to say, dum, dum, dum.
Okay, our next card is from Tammy Pittman.
Hi, my name is Tammy Pittman, I'm from Concord, North Carolina, and she's a hard act to follow. A headline in our newspaper, the Independent Tribune, not a conservative paper to say the least, last Friday said Cabarrus spending doubles in nine years. How much will your taxes go up? Let me recap our elections for the last few years. Commissioner Meesmer was elected in 2010 with the most votes. In 2014, Mr. Meesmer was voted out by a group that thought Mr. Meesmer and the others were being too conservative with spending and not going into debt. They tried to brand Mr. Meesmer and the others as closing Cabarrus County to business, all because Mr. Meesmer and other Commissioners thought it prudent to pay as you go. Let me ask you, are you allowed to spend without end within your household, going ever more into debt? No. You may have to go into a little bit of debt, but if you're prudent, you and I realize the pocket is not endless, and some things have to wait because at some point that debt comes due, and you and I have to pay for it. Because at some point, that debt comes due, and you and I have to pay for it. Who are these commissioners that ousted Mr. Meesmer and others by branding them? Commissioner Honeycutt, Grace Minnet, and Lynn Shue. Then in 2016, they recruited Steve Morris to join the team. So Commissioner Morris has been on the board since 2016. When did the Tribune say that the spending had doubled? It has doubled since 2016. That's the amount of time that Commissioner Morris, Commissioner Honeycutt, Minnet, and Shue have been in charge of the board. Why has this spending increased so much? I guess they would say because they wanted Cabarrus County to be open for business. What a silly concept. Business is always welcome in Cabarrus County and North Carolina for that matter. My feeling is that North Carolina is such a perfect state with great weather, good schools, low income taxes, and all the beauty from the mountains to the coast. Why do they have such a low opinion of Cabarrus County that we have to pay people to come here? If we tried, we could not keep people from coming to North Carolina and Cabarrus County. So why do we need to pay, give incentives to people to build businesses here and therefore bring more people here as well? We don't. So quit giving away money, our money, for no reason. Keep our taxes low, and we will prosper. Increase taxes, and people and businesses will lead.
David Leonard, Reimer area. Nothing I'm about to say will change the fact that Mr. Morris, Mr. Shue, Mr. Wardman, and Mr. Farr will vote to approve the largest tax increase in the history of Cabarrus County. This $510 million budget is $96 million higher than fiscal year 2024. The property owners who pay 70% of the budget have repeatedly told these men that we can't afford this increase, yet they persist. They have lied to us, told us half-truths, and mounted a social media image campaign designed to influence us, and still we stand here in opposition to this massive government expansion. I've watched an endless parade of government agencies walk past this commission and ask for more money. Mr. Morris and his three amigos have approved every request, never once questioning the amount. This budget is overfunded in every way. By their own admission, only 80% of this budget is required by the state law. This means that $102 million could be cut without penalty. Rodgy said last week that $22.7 million needed to be cut to achieve revenue neutral. This would leave an increase of $73.3 million over fiscal year 2024, yet Mr. Morris and his yes votes refused to consider it. They gave the fire brigade an unwarranted raise due to the 64% increase in home values. They continue to hide the true impact of the budget by leaving the increased fire tax out. The $532 we are now being quoted is actually $700 a year when you factor in the increase in fire tax. They have purposely pushed school funding to 2026, ensuring another tax increase mid-cycle. Mike Downs will convert $350 million to a mortgage this year while interest rates are at a 23-year high. This cost will be passed on to property owners. I've never seen the amount of corruption in this county that we have today. This massive government expansion, along with the tax breaks for billion-dollar companies and the redistribution of our wealth through social services and increases, will destroy the middle class of this county. So go ahead and pass this budget against the will of the property owners, but know this: We will not forget, and we will be silent no more.
Our next card is from Barbara Strang.
Good evening, Commissioners. Barbara Strang, resident of Cabarrus County. There's a few things that would help you cut some revenue issues that we have here. One thing I want you to take a backseat to and look at this again is under your retention and recruitment policy, you've added in floating holidays, you've added in sick leave. And one thing that to me appears to be the biggest slap in the current employees' faces is allowing them to carry over vacation from other entities, state and government agencies, as well as giving them two additional wellness leaves for mental health. I work for the state. I don't get mental health or floating holidays. Additionally, you have also mentioned paid parental leave. Well, I did a little research working in Mecklenburg County. Mecklenburg County had 553 people take advantage of FMLA over a one-and-a-half-year period. Each of those claims paid out 120 hours per person. Do the math. It shows in here that this doesn't require budget funds. I'm not sure how that's even possible if you have to pay out that much in FMLA. Additionally, when I'm looking at the potential $350 million additional debt this county wants to go in, I see several things on here. How did the training facility, the public safety training facility, get to that astronomical cost? Additionally, why are we even budgeting for a new elementary school when Beverly Hills is currently under litigation, and we don't know the outcome? Additionally, I see a $47 million new workforce innovation center at RCCC. It's my indication and my hunch that that will be used for Eli Lilly, which is an additional tax cost to the taxpayers of this county besides the tax incentives they got. And you've already requested $200,000 to go into RCCC, or RCCCC has, to provide an updated facility and lab for Lilly alone. Stop giving away the farm. And lastly, when looking at all these items and all these budget items, some of these could be put on the back burner, as some of these folks have said that you are bankrupting them. And with that, I will say, several members of this current board, previous boards, due to your foolish spending and wasteful spending, you will not have a great legacy in Cabarrus County. You will have the legacy of bankrupting this county.
Our next card is from Laura Lindsey.
Laura Blackwell Lindsey, Harrisburg. Citizens of Cabarrus County, we have been deceived. We were told that if we went along with handing out large tax incentives to large corporations, that would result in our property taxes staying low. That was a lie. The truth is, those large tax breaks were for your political benefit. So you could selfishly go back to those companies and ask them for thousands of dollars in campaign contributions. Downright selfish behavior hidden behind a lie. Because as we see in this budget, our taxes are not staying low. We were told that you all were spending our tax dollars wisely and doing the best you could as leaders. That was a lie. Instead, you were collecting tax money from all of us, the citizens of Cabarrus County, and doling it out on projects that you and your friends wanted. This budget is no exception. It's public knowledge that the city of Kannapolis paid the chairman of this board hundreds of thousands of dollars for his theater stock and logo. Money that went into his bank account, not the county's bank account. And now we see that during the same period of time, there were special incentives passed by this board for the city of Kannapolis. That gives them $2 million in this budget. $2 million that could have instead paid for county services and kept our property taxes low. There is a theme here: Giving away our tax dollars so you can get something for yourself in return. Campaign contributions or money for your theater stock, it's all the same. It's personal benefit, while the taxpayers pick up the ever-increasing bill. I've spoken to thousands of voters across this county, many of them who cannot afford to have their county taxes increased by hundreds or even thousands of dollars in this budget, just so you can benefit for yourself and your friends. Should I even bring up the brand-new school building being built across the street from the chairman of this board's personal residence? A project that will increase his home's resale value? That small detail hasn't been discussed in public setting. Or the outrageous $43 million purchase price of the ACN building, close to double the property's assessed value, with no one buying Class A office space and even downsizing current leases? What in the world is going on behind the scenes that would motivate you all to pay double and stick us taxpayers with the bill? Could it be personal benefit? The bottom line is there is plenty of money for the county's needs if the leaders of this board stopped using our tax dollars to benefit themselves and their friends. Approval of this budget will result in the largest tax increase in recent Cabarrus County history, and the weight of that falls squarely on your shoulders. Your lies are no longer convincing. I leave you with Matthew 15:14. Let them alone; they be blind leaders of the blind. And if the blind lead the blind, both shall fall into the ditch.
Our next card is from Tracy Dry.
Good evening. Tracy Dry from Reimer Town. The word "budget" has several uses. It is a plan for income and expenses. Budget also implies restraint in spending. Looking at the proposed county budget, it is evident no one considered the second use of the word. Why does the county government need to grow as much and as quickly as is being proposed? Big government is not a Republican principle. While I understand Mr. Downs' job is to try and get as much as he can for the county in the budget, and thus may not have an appreciation for the advantages of smaller government, this board is made up of five registered Republicans who should know that. As I stated at the last meeting, I want each department to have what they truly need to operate. However, these increased requests do not appear to be covering just needs. I also understand employee retention is important. Giving cost of living and merit raises to the extent that is being requested gives the appearance of either ignorance or indifference. To do so, one either has to be ignorant to the fact that people in the private sector have not been getting those raises, or they would have to be indifferent and simply not care. Which category would you put yourself in? The reality we taxpayers live in does not look like a growing and prosperous economy. Regular people, the very people who are being expected to foot this bill, are having to make big changes to their spending to cover their needs. They are dealing with power bills going up due to rate increases, and groceries now costing hundreds more per month. We, as responsible adults, have to pay for what we need and forego much of what we want. For the county to come and ask for an increase in tax revenue of $51,434,842 with a straight face, looks like they are out of touch with the reality of the citizens. Are you out of touch with the citizens you were elected to represent? In conversation with several county employees, I have found that they are not in favor of this budget because they don't feel they need the increases. I have been thanked for coming and speaking because, as taxpayers, they feel you need to hear what I'm saying. I ask you to consider this: Would all the spending and future debt be worth it to you without years of donor expectations and campaign debt payments on your shoulders? If you weren't a commissioner and were sitting on this side of the microphone, would you honestly want this budget to pass? Would the numbers the county is asking for sit right with you? If not, then you need to not pass this budget. Thank you.
Okay, our next card is from Wesley Honeycutt.
Wes Honeycutt, Midland. This current budget proposal includes $509 million in expenditures, as others have noted. And looking back at historical budgets, the 2020 fiscal year budget included $298 million in expenditures. In five years, that's a 70% increase to the tune of more than $210 million. Five years. This trajectory is unsustainable and, quite frankly, abuse and extortion of Cabarrus County taxpayers. In a time when many of your constituents are just making ends meet, you continue growing this already bloated government. It's not your money. Every dollar you allocate towards building over-the-top facilities, increasing pay and benefits, handing out bonuses and raises is all stolen from taxpayers. In many cases, you're taken from earners who get zero paid time off, zero retirement, and you want more for individuals who already have plenty of it. Where does it stop? It doesn't. It's always more. Even with this new bloated budget, what are you all projecting for fiscal year 2027? A shortage, right? A shortage. $509 million to run the government this year, and within two years, you'll be back to squeeze taxpayers more. And you're attempting to go on a spending spree, taking on $350 million in new debt to cripple the ability to make future cuts. To everyone in this room, it doesn't matter if there's something that you need with your money. They want it. They can take it from you. That's what they're doing. The mark of success as elected official is not in how big you can grow the government. I want a government so small that I can barely see it. You all have a choice tonight. The right thing to do is to reject the county manager's budget proposal and tell him this isn't appropriate stewardship of tax dollars. We are not fruit. We are tired of being squeezed. We're not going to let it go. And honestly, I think, Kenny, Tim, I think you two are the swing votes. I don't think you others can be swayed. But you're the swing votes. I think if you truly listen to what folks are going through, and you think about where things are headed if we continue down this path, you'll realize that it certainly isn't towards freedom and prosperity, at least not for most of us. You're supposed to be the voice for us, for the people, elected officials, to do what I would do if I was up there. The people sent a message this past primary, and the message is that we're tired of this tax and spend with no end. Vote accordingly.
Our next card is from Larry Pittman.
Larry Pittman, 250 Roberta Road Southwest in Concord. You know, we've heard a lot from this board about transparency. Got to be transparent. Well, I'll tell you what, after 11 years on the Appropriations Committee in the North Carolina House, specifically on the Subcommittee on Government of Appropriations, I know what a transparent budget looks like. And Ms. Kelly was kind enough to give me a copy of your budget book, and I've been going through that thing, and transparent or transparents are not words that come to mind. It's like, how can we hide stuff, is more what I see. You know very well, if Laura and I are elected in November, we don't know that we will be at this point, but if we are, some of this stuff's going to change. And Chris Meesmer understands that, and last time that I was here, he called you out on it. He told you, $350 million extra debt is to tie our hands so that we can't make the changes that we want to make for the good of the people of this county. But I think there's more to it than that. I think somebody can't deal with the fact they lost an election. The two people, especially me, I didn't even have $6,500, I didn't have $6,500 in my campaign account, and I barely did any, you know, real campaigning. Still beat you. And I think you just can't take that, and so you're going to punish the taxpayer residences of this county because they didn't vote for you. That's what I see. Now, you know, I don't know what you believe about the Lord coming back and Judgment Day, and it may be real tough to be in my shoes, you know, when that day comes. But when I have been in government in the past, and if I'm in government in the future, it is to serve the people, not to share in extorting them. And incentives is one thing I will never consider doing because it is extortion, and you have enriched yourselves with it. Now, there is a Judgment Day coming. You've already had the primary Judgment Day, and you lost on that one. You know, the Lord may have to forgive me for... You know, the Lord may have to forgive me for saying this, but I don't want to be in your shoes when He comes.
Our next card is from Jim Quick.
Jim Quick, Spencer Avenue in Concord. Gentlemen, I want to take you back to, I think all of you own your own homes, and when you went into that home, you inspected it, you hired professionals, and I am sure that you asked them tons of questions. You wanted to know before you dotted on that line what you were getting, what the value of the home was, what kind of improvements you were going to need, and you probably negotiated with that seller to say, will you do this for me, will you do that for me? I have been so disturbed to come to several of these workshop meetings, watching online, and also be here, and most of you not ask a single question to Mike Downs and the staff. Now, if your wife doubled her expenses in your household over the last five years, I would think that you would be asking her or your partner what in the world is going on and why her expenses are so high. But yet, I see you, most of you here, not asking a single question. And so I looked at the budget, and I certainly hope the reason that you're not asking questions is the budget books that you have are very, much thicker and much more detailed than what we, as a citizens, can get when we look on the website. But I have some questions when I look at this budget. Oh, $510 million of spending, $70 million for a training facility for law enforcement. I think they need to be trained. But the rationale in the budget is so they don't have to spend so much money to travel. How much money are we spending for these men and women to travel? I don't get it. We're spending $3 million to store equipment at Frank List, the lawn mowers and the rakes. I am sure that they need a good facility. I don't know that we need to spend $3 million to store that. Our school district has said to us, listen, we need to do $1 billion of spending. The first thing that we're going to do was we're going to spend $70 million to replace an elementary school, replace a 4K school, and for all of that $70 million of spending, we're going to get 50 seats. When a school district is telling us that we're going to need to add thousands of seats in the future. I didn't hear a lot of people asking about how we're going to meet the needs of the future. There was a lot about Beverly Hills. There wasn't a whole lot about it. I just don't understand why we, we're paying you because of your own salary, as well as we voted for you to ask questions. So please, tonight, when you vote, will you pretend to care about the $510 million of our money that you are spending? Because if we had to ask questions, I think we would do more than what's happened across this dais in the last three budget meetings.
That concludes all the people that have signed up for informal public comments. I may have got one more.
Hello, Commissioners. Steve. So there's been a proposal to authorize the spending of $350 million taxpayer dollars, and I'm wondering, since your time on the board is winding down, it seems to me that it would be an appropriate move to allow the new board to decide how to spend that money and let the responsibility rest with them. I would hate to think that any of that money might have anything to do with the payback of political favors or donations. I'm sorry for even considering that, but where I grew up, corruption was commonplace and constant. I'd like to think we're far above that here in Cabarrus County. If you attempt to handicap the new board by spending this $350 million, it seems fairly certain that your name will come up as often as a reason for any financial hardships that may arise in the near future. There are those who say you're angry about losing the past election and see this as a way to stick it to them. Them meaning Larry Pittman and Laura Blackwell-Lindsey. Or perhaps better said, enacting revenge. Some say there are plenty of reasons why you lost that election. Surely, it doesn't benefit you to offer proof. Please don't leave us with the impression that you're being vindictive. Instead, just bow out gracefully, and perhaps one day you can return as Mr. Mesmer has done here. Thank you very much.
Okay, we now move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are items that have been discussed at our work session two weeks ago. Commissioners, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move now to new business. First item up is a fiscal year 2025 Economic Development Allocation. This is a public hearing that has been advertised pursuant to North Carolina General Statute The county must conduct a separate public hearing for economic development appropriations. A funding plan is approved during the public hearing when each new economic incentive is approved, and now one is required for the county's annual appropriation for the contribution to the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation. Did you have anything to add? Or is anybody else supposed to speak?
No, sir. Nothing to add other than the amount, the county contribution to the Economic Development Corporation is same as the last several years, it's $400,000.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing.
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
You said that this, the amount of funding is the same as the previous year. Now, how long is this contract for with the EDC?
It's annual. I don't have the contract that brought to me, but...
But it is an annual contract. Okay, because it's not listed in our agenda. Yeah, I just, and also clarification for public as well. And then, could you explain to us? So just for everyone here to understand, the EDC is the Economic Development Corporation, and now this is the avenue in which this board has the ability to give the tax breaks to the multimillion-dollar and multibillion-dollar companies, just so everyone's aware of that. And so, as it was mentioned, that we approve this on annual cycle, but I've got a couple of questions before we move forward with the public hearing. I want to ask about the structure of the EDC, and I guess this is for Mike, County Manager, the structure of the EDC, because I noticed, flipping through our budget booklet on page 78, there's four positions for the Economic Development Corporation. And I was curious if you can explain the structure to us.
I can try. I don't know all the job titles, but I can try, yes.
I don't have to know the job titles, but just the structure.
So there is four. There is the executive director. There is a recruiter as well, and then there is a small business person, supporter. I'm not sure of the exact title. I don't have it in front of me. And then the final decision is the administrative assistant or carries out those duties. I'm not sure of the title there as well.
Okay, and now what does the small business, you said small business person, what do they do at the EDC?
They are currently going in and out of a lot of the local businesses that are here now and asking for providing services. Is there anything that they need? Is there anything that they can, that the Economic Development Corporation can help them do, such as training and that type of thing? So they don't actually supply the training, but they can help to find it.
Okay. I would like to receive more information on what that entails and also, I guess, more information on all the positions. But I guess specifically, and I appreciate that information, but specifically, so the proposal is to grant them $400,000 in funding, which is done each year by this board. However, from my understanding is they operate as an independent entity. So that's, I guess, my question is, why is there four positions in the budget for an organization that operates independently from the county? I guess that's the structure I'm trying to...
I'm not sure what your question is.
So the EDC, you know, each municipality contributes money. We contribute $400,000. However, they have four positions. They have their own budget with...
In the county's budget, you're asking where the positions are at?
That's correct, on page 78.
Yeah, so they are EDC employees, and they do, so they contract with the county to, they are considered county employees with benefits. However, all of their expenses are reimbursed to the county at 100%.
Okay, and how did that structure come about? Because from my understa, in years past, it's not always been that arrangement. The, you know, the county's contribution was given to the EDC to operate, as I said, independently. How did it come to the mixing of them being county employees, although they're not paid by the county? So explain to me how that process is going to...
They, just as in the past, where they were recruiting, having issues with recruiting, having issues at that small of a business to get insurance and other coverages there for benefits. So that was, the decision was made to come to this board and those that were on the board at the time to present that to them, to provide the opportunity for them to be county employees and participate in our benefit program with the understanding that the EDC Commission would reimburse the county 100%.
Okay, and how long has that been going on, would you say?
I don't recollect what the...
Okay, and then, so, okay, so they're categorized as county employees, but they do not report to you. Is that correct?
They report to the board.
To which board?
To the EDC Board.
Okay.
Which I am a member of the EDC Board, along with all of the other managers in the county as well.
Right, right, okay. And now, how many other organizations in the county do we have this kind of structure with, where the organization employees are categorized as county employees, however, they do not report to you, or an organization who has employees that are categorized as county employees, and then they turn around and reimburse? How many other organizations do we have like that, that structure?
That particular structure, there are no others.
Okay. All right, all right, so that answers my questions. I really just wanted FYI, just so everyone's aware of exactly what we're voting on, and I need some clarifications on that. But as I said, this is the avenue that grants this board the ability to decide which companies receive a tax break in Cabarrus County and which ones do not. I guess my other question, and this is probably for the tax administrator, with, how much has residential properties increased versus commercial properties? What were the percentage on that? That would be for the, unless you have those numbers, Mike?
I don't have them.
Okay.
Good question. I don't have those numbers specifically ready this evening. I can get those. I think I provided an email.
I feel like I had seen, and so I didn't want to quote it wrong, so general numbers would be okay, but from what I can recall, residential properties increased in value by 60-something percent. I think it was like 63%. And commercial was somewhere around like 28. Does that seem 30%? Increased in value about 30%? Does that seem...
What you're asking is the average increase in value or the total increase in value?
Yes, the average, the percentage of value of increase from residential versus commercial, if you extrapolate them out.
So that sounds reasonable, that residential properties, on average, increased about 60%. Commercial industrial properties were lower than that, and I would say probably closer to 40%, but I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Okay, all right, that's just what I need to know. So that brings me to my point, is that this that we're voting on, as I said, it gives an avenue for this board to give tax breaks to corporations, multimillion-dollar, multibillion-dollar corporations, who property values have not increased as much as your residential properties out in this area. So you, as a residential property owner, do not have, well, a couple items down, we're going to be discussing the biggest tax increase in Cabarrus County history on the local taxpayer. So as a residential property owner, it should make you feel some kind of way that this board has the ability to decide which companies receive these tax breaks. And as I just wanted to point out, that commercial properties are not increasing as much as residential. So the tax burden is shifted to the residential property owner.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, as I mentioned before, this is a public hearing for the funding of the Economic Development Corporation. And so at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter.
Larry Pittman again. I would urge you to stop this. I know that's not going to be an easy thing to do. You can't just do it like that. But I would urge you to stop giving taxpayer money to an Economic Development Commission Corporation, whichever you call it. My feeling is that if the Chamber of Commerce wants an EDC, let them take care of it, let them fund it, and if they want incentives, let them pay them and quit doing it on the backs of taxpayers. So I hope you'll somehow turn around and at least get started on severing the relationship between the county commission and the EDC.
Hi, my name's Eleanor Zalum. I live off Adjoina Road outside the city limits of Concord. I have two other properties that are rental properties, one in Concord and one in Kannapolis. All property taxes are going up across the board. I'll tell you right now, my tenants aren't even able to pay their rent on time in full as it is now. I'm getting my rent in installments, and I'm trying to not take anyone to evict. I'm trying to be understanding because I know they're in the same boat I am. I don't earn any more money today than I did 10 years ago, 20 years ago when I moved here. But my expenses are going up. I'm going to have to raise my tenants' rent. Now, another thing is, I'm a private individual. Nobody's paying my bills for me. So I try to be understanding to my tenants, who have limited income and opportunity. But what bothers me is somehow these developers are getting permit after permit after permit to build these apartment buildings, which is stealing real estate space, an opportunity for every person that wants to own a home. Every time an apartment building is approved, like the one in Kannapolis, it started as one building. Now it's like a maze, and nobody that lives there owns their space. It's all rented. So there is a corporate office, corporate companies that are getting more and more wealthy. Why aren't they getting the tax raises on their property values like we are? They should be hit at 60, 70, 80% because their money is so much, they can't even spend it fast enough. And us, the private homeowners, the retired people, the veterans that are on disability, us... us normal people, that single women raising their children, even couples with two-person incomes, nobody's getting a raise. We have, our car insurance went up, our property insurance went up. Now, our groceries have gone up, gas has gone up, but our incomes aren't going up, have not gone up one penny. And you're squeezing us for more taxes? It's atrocious and I don't understand. If your taxes, you're voting to raise the property tax, I'm assuming this is the same application for your home that's maybe 600,000, 800,000, a million dollars, a million and a half dollars in value. So why would you pass something and dig yourself in more of a financial hole? Be responsible like we have to be with our budget.
I just like, you know, how do I hold the Economic Board of Development accountable? Do we vote, where do these people even come from? Who appoints them? These posh positions, 400 grand, is that just salary? Or is that their budget to make these videos for Eli Lilly to show the plants and all this? I don't know if that's just their salary. So we're paying 400,000 to an entity so they can give away more of our money? How does this math add up? And then you guys are like, oh, well, that's not us, that's the Economic Board of Development. Well, you guys are the ones we voted for. You're the only ones that we can hold to account. And then we have, we're holding you to account, we're going to continue to. I really wish Mr. Wortman would like pay a little bit of attention. We're hoping for your vote. You too, Mr. Fur, we've given up on Mr. Morris, we've given up on Shu. But you guys, come on, man, you were there just not long ago. The government's sucking your soul. Find yourself.
When this process began, I emailed all these commissioners and I got an email from Mr. Shu and I was telling him that I was against this Economic Development Committee, that it should be eliminated. And he said, well, we don't want to go back to a time when Cabarrus was closed to business, okay? Well, I'm going to give you my life story. When in 1987, I was making $1,000 a week working for a private, small businessman with less than 10 employees and he received nothing. Economically incentivize these huge corporations to come in here, like Amazon and Walmart Warehouse. And the starting pay on these jobs is $17 an hour, which is $680 a week. And this is 2024. In 1987, I was making $1,000 a week working for a private businessman and there was no Economic Development Committee.
I have heard a lot about the Economic Development Committee and how that brings all these jobs here and it brings business here that we wouldn't otherwise get here. And I know there are some folks that think that people like me who oppose that were just ignorant rednecks. But I'm a decently smart guy. I mean, I've worked in the analytics space for more than a decade now and managed to somehow move into a senior director role in an analytics position. So I mean, I know a little bit about math and numbers and whatnot. And I'm not saying that to be cocky, but I just mean, stop belittling people that disagree with you. Economic development, I noticed that we always take credit for the good, but not credit for the bad. See, you can't believe that these businesses only come here for incentives while simultaneously not believing that some aren't coming here because you're not giving incentives. So you don't take credit for the ones that don't come and the tax revenue that we miss out on because our tax rate is so high. But you do take credit for the ones that come here because you gave them a break. That makes no sense. And when you think about it, I don't do Eli Lilly's taxes, but their property taxes is about this much of their expense. When you think about their employment, when you think about other facilities expenses and whatnot. Now, I would venture to guess it's probably 1% to 2% of their expense. Where we're at, the proximity we have to Charlotte, proximity we have to major interstates, that has a lot more to do with businesses coming here than economic development incentives. Economic development incentives is a way for government to take credit for something while not actually doing anything. I keep hearing Cabarrus County was closed for business. I know multiple folks have brought that up tonight. Most of the country was closed for business in the time that y'all say Cabarrus County was closed for business. After 2008, things were really, really, really slow until about 2016. They started picking up maybe 2013, 2014, but things were slow everywhere. I promise you guys that the Cabarrus County Economic Development did not kick off an economic boom throughout the country. We didn't do that. That didn't happen. You benefited like everybody else did. You benefited from where we're at. Cabarrus County is close to Charlotte, is close to I-85, 485, 77. There's a reason that other more rural counties within 45 minutes of here could give a 99% tax break and Eli Lilly would never build there. They wouldn't. They would not. So this whole thing of patting ourselves on the back and saying, "Economic development, we're doing something," that's all that is. Pretending, pretending that it does something. Taking credit, having something that we can put on these little million mailers that I get during election time about how many jobs we created and how much revenue we brought here and how much higher taxes would be if we didn't have it. It's not true. It's a half-truth. So I say, end it, abolish it.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to control this. My name's Jean Chandler, Kannapolis. I'm ARFAT, which is Region F, Area and Agent. Also, I have been voted in as Star Hill legislator for advocating for seniors. And I also work in various other things representing seniors. I am a senior. My husband is a senior. I am seeing so many seniors that are being taxed out of their homes and you people don't even care because you're getting the raises and you're getting the kickbacks. And in the meantime, like the people that rent from us, they're barely making it and I'm not going up on their rent. I will not go up on their rent, ever. But that rental house went up $100,000 with your evaluation. I've been fighting this board since 2014 and Chris knows because he was right along for the ride and Chris was good. All these things, you never talk about what benefits the people versus what's benefiting you. And I'm so glad that we're getting the votes out here and some things are going to be changed. But you've got to look at this point of it too, for these seniors. And I'm able to get out, I'm able to do these things. Some of them aren't. And the majority work for Cannon Mills. They hardly get anything. I'll maybe that knows what Cannon Mills get, very little retirement. I'm in the position right now that if something happened to my husband, I would probably lose my house because you went up so much on the taxes. I just want you to think about, one day you're going to be a senior, one day you're going to need help. And then are you going to come and fight? Probably not.
The latest economic development package that came through this dais was to ACN. ACN was here once and we, in our county, gave them quite a bit of money to come. And now you all have decided to purchase their building for somewhere between 43, 46 million dollars, while the market value is somewhere around 23. In addition, you also decided to spend $20 million to fix it up after you buy it. Again, going back to that analogy, when you're buying your house and you negotiate a deal, who in their right mind would buy a building that need $20 million of enhancements that was $20 million over market value? Now, today, houses in Cabarrus County go really quickly when they're ready to move in, the paint is good, the driveway is good, the finishing is good, everything's been refinished and it's ready to move in. Cabarrus County uses economic development to these corporations to spend above market value and also spend an additional $20 million to move our people in. Now, listen, we have awesome county staff. I think they're well worth it. I know very many of them and they do an excellent job. But I think even they would agree, you could probably build something and not have to spend double market value and invest $20 million. It just doesn't make sense to us. Now, again, you may have details in that budget book that you have that we can't get as citizens. But from my perspective, when I look at the website and when I look at all of this and I look at market values, where certainly commercial real estate, we just heard is only going up 30% and all of our homes are going up 60%, you'd think you'd be able to strike a really good deal for a building that's been on the market for years and nobody wanted to buy it. But for some reason, we decided to go ahead. So if you are addicted to spending, why don't you take this $400,000 and help some of these people that are out here saying they can't afford their homes or they need some help before they get evicted and let economic development go and recruit the funding for their own salaries and help the citizens that are here that are saying they can't afford their homes? Because as citizens, this, again, does not make sense to us.
Hello, commissioners. I guess my comment's very simple. I just want to take a whole message that I keep hearing from everybody. Also shout out to everyone that talked about how they will not raise their rent on people. As a renter, I really appreciate that. But what I keep hearing is that corporations do not treat the people right. These big corporations that come in here, whether it's housing, whether it's, you know, providing these jobs. I've worked for different entities over the years. I can tell you that working for a big corporation versus working for a local entity, local people, it's a distinctly different experience. And I don't really know, I haven't done my research adequately for this, you know, Economic Development Commission. But I just want to say to please invest those dollars into local people. Rather than incentivizing giant corporations to come here, there's big numbers of jobs that's said that it's developed. But a lot of those are, you know, housekeeping, very low-paying jobs that really don't actually feed dollars into our economy. And so I guess my take a whole message is that I would really advocate for those dollars to be spent on local businesses and local people as much as possible. That's all.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter in the public hearing?
One last from me, Mark Ortiz from Kannapolis. I keep thinking about an idea that's popular among people who are recognized as free-market fundamentalists and libertarians, notably Milton Friedman, former libertarian candidate for governor here in North Carolina, Mike Munger. And that is a universal, non-mains tested subsidy to citizens. Universal basic income, tax rebate. This has been done in a few places. Alaska does this with their oil revenue. They give everybody a check. There's no bureaucracy, no means testing, no disincentive if you benefit yourself, unlike means-tested subsidies. This was done with a sales tax rebate in Minnesota when Jesse Ventura was governor. They called them Jesse checks. Now, if we took these big corporations who do own property here, but a lot of the people who are principals there don't live here, we taxed them and we just gave people, renters and property owners alike. Remember, renters pay property taxes slightly indirectly, but they pay them because their landlord has to pay them. Now, this is something that Milton Friedman and a lot of other people have been advocates of. I don't expect anything like that to be enacted today, but I just want to plant a seed here. Think about this. Doesn't disincentivize achievement. It uses government to move money downward instead of upward as I was talking about when I spoke before. Think about that. Thank you.
Hello, I have a very, just a simple vision. Okay, I lived in Charlotte. My husband and I moved to Charlotte, moved from Charlotte to Kannapolis in '92. I fell in love with Concord. I'm not, you know, I'm not from Concord, but I fell in love with it, especially the downtown area. And like, why do we need so much change? We don't want to be like Charlotte. We want to be like Concord. We like our small town. And now we got these studio apartments down there that are 1,600 a month and we got all these big corporations coming in here. You know, why can't we just be a little more simple? Save a lot of money. Treat the people that have been born here and lived here like they should be treated without all these excessive expenses. I mean, I just don't get it, you know? You know, maybe people want us to be a city, but I liked the Concord the way it was. It wasn't broken, so it doesn't need to be fixed.
Back in the 1960s, my father-in-law took a chance and decided to start a business. He had no incentive from the county. I don't even know that there were such things as business incentives at that point in time. But he took a leap of faith and he built a business. And it was a successful business and he was able to expand that business. And this was all without the help of the county government, without the help of an economic development corporation. We are blessed that that business is still in operation today. Okay, 1960s to 2024, that's a pretty long time. We've never once been contacted by the EDC to see what we need to help our business grow, what we need to be able to hire more employees to improve the quality of life in the county and in the community that we live in. If you are determined to keep the Economic Development Corporation around and keep it on the taxpayers' dime, they should be responsible for making sure that they're reaching out to all businesses, not just big corporations, not just large, large, small businesses that make large campaign contributions. This is not okay. We don't need to have people working at the EDC who are married to people that work in development who then turn around and make these contributions to campaigns before we make incentive votes. It stinks, y'all. It just stinks. It doesn't look upright, it doesn't look correct. It looks bad. It is not reflective of gentlemen. It is not reflective of the behavior that we would expect out of elected officials in our county. This is not what the citizens want you to do. We want to be treated fairly. We want all businesses to be given the same chance to succeed without having favorites picked based on size or campaign contributions. Thank you.
Jerome Jennings, Kannapolis. Keep it very, very, very brief. I'm a big NASCAR fan. Stewart Haas closed down recently. Don't know if you guys gave them any economic incentives, but they're gone. There's a lot of people maybe out of work. Stanley Black and Decker just announced within the last couple of days, they're closing up shop. You know, again, if they got anything, I would like to see something where we can claw back some of what we gave them to come here, to start those jobs. If they're going to leave, I don't know if there's agreements, if they say they're going to be here 10, 20, 15 years. If they cut bait a little early, maybe we ought to claw some of that back. Chiquita Bananas came to Charlotte years ago, built a big, you know, they moved their corporate headquarters here. They left like two or three years later. Charlotte lost a lot, so I just like you guys to be mindful of that sort of thing.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak in the public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. The requirement for this hearing is just to conduct the hearing, to hear from the public, which we have done, and the funding of the Economic Development Corporation will be a portion of the budget. And so we move to the next item. This is refinancing of a draw program. Cabarrus County plans to refinance its current draw program with fixed financing in July. As a part of that process, a public hearing will be required, which will be at the June 17, 2024 Board of Commissioners regular meeting. The county plans to refinance up to $230,000 as part of the financing to pay off the current draw program and the purchase of the ACN building. Does it have anybody from staff to speak on this? Jim, Alden, our finance director?
Yeah, I did not have anything additional, Mr. Chairman, than what you stated, but part of the process is to have a public hearing, and then afterwards, there should be a resolution in your packages that the board needs to approve afterwards. And just to clarify, I think you said 230,000. It's 230 million?
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions for you. You had spoken at our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, and had mentioned that this refinancing was with Bank of America, and I'm assuming that is still correct, two weeks later. Is that correct?
The draw program with Bank of America.
Okay.
We do not know who the refinancing will be with yet.
Okay. And so the $230 million is what will be refinanced, and then the ACN building will come from the drawdown. Is that correct?
No. So we will, we will have fixed financing of no more than 230 million. Roughly 188 is part of the draw program. That's the refinancing piece, and then 42 million for the ACN purchase.
So the ACN purchase will go on the drawdown?
No, it'll be part of the fixed financing. It's all going to be one, one loan.
Okay.
The draw program will be a different program that we'll bring to you next month.
Okay. And so now this fixed debt, what would be the interest rate? Are you still shopping it around? Because we don't-
Correct. We do not know yet.
So will you have to come back to us once that's determined, or is that a decision that you make?
I think that's a decision we can make. Whoever the best, provides us the best rate, that's who we'll go with.
Okay. And generally, who, who is that with, would you say? Is it-
I like-
Nope. It just depends?
Well, it'll be, it'll be LOB, Limited Obligation Bonds, so it could be a wide range of different entities.
And now does that, and does that have to go through the local government commission for approval?
Yes, sir.
And, and do they see what items are included in that refinancing debt?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they're aware of-
They will. We will. We have our applications submitted, and their meeting is July, boy, I think it's July 9.
Okay.
I mean, am I-
Yeah, we can get those dates for you.
Yeah.
And so typically, whenever the county is going to finance, let's say, let's say a building, typically, whenever they finance, is this the route we would go generally when purchasing a, a building for something that large?
Yes.
For this, okay. And then, I guess that's all the questions I have for you, Jim, but-
Okay.
Mike, I got a couple of questions. As far as the ACN building itself, what, what is the intended purpose of this building for-
The intended purpose is to relocate several of our human services, our social services staff to that building, the one that is in a Kmart building that we've leased for 20 years, Jim? Is that-
Yes.
20 years.
And some of those, and from my understanding, some of those human services employees have been moved to the milestone building. Is that correct?
A portion of them have been moved to the milestone building, and then hopefully the remainder of them will move to the ACN building.
Okay. And then will it still continue to be split between the milestone and ACN?
It will.
And then, and how, I guess I want to know a little bit of history about this. Of course, you know, we have discussed this, I believe, for almost a year now. This was before Commissioner Fur came on the board. But how did it come about, the ACN building in particular? I, I remember whenever you guys brought it to us in a meeting, you know, about whether or not we wanted to go under contract. And I was the only one on this board that voted not to go under contract. Then, like I said, Commissioner Fur, you, you were not on this board at that time, but had, did, was the ACN building for sale, or how did that initial conversations come about?
My recollection, this is that we, we looked at the ACN building several years back. And at the time, we made the decision that we didn't think we wanted to pursue it. And then most recently, it's probably been a little over a year, year and a half now, that we've had those conversations with them. With the inability to find another location, the other option was to build, and to build a building of that size, it was going to be much, much more expensive to build.
Okay. And so whenever the county had looked at this building, you said a number of years back, was it for sale at that point, or?
It was.
Okay. So, so I'm just curious if there was any other, okay, so, so it's been for sale since then, would you say?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Okay. And the tax value on the building, does anyone know what that is?
I do not.
Well, I looked it up. It's, it's about $23 million. So, and what is our purchase price that we're purchasing this building for?
42.
42 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, so I mean, I know this was mentioned earlier, but, you know, I had wrote this down. You know, we're purchasing a building for almost, almost double the price of the value, of the tax value. And then we're going to spend an additional, we're actually going to finance $20 million to go renovate the building. And, and so that's what's being proposed in this budget. So I want everyone to, to realize that, that we are going to be paying double for the building, then spending $20 million to refinance. And then also too, another, another thing to mention, that ACN received a tax incentive, so they didn't, so they were able to not, they had the ability from this board to not pay their full tax bill for a number of years, and we did not receive revenue on that. And then now, we are going to be taking that off of the tax rolls. So Cabarrus County will not be receiving any tax revenue once, once this decision's made, if us decide to, to purchase the building. But I just want to ask you those questions. I know we got to do a public hearing again, so.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions for Jim? Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter.
Is there a rate you won't accept? Do you guys have any idea? Do you have like-
If you could speak, once you get to the microphone, please.
Is there a rate you won't accept? Do you guys have any kind of like, here's what we will accept, and here's what we won't, or we're just going into this with like, we don't know the rate yet, but whatever it is, it is. Like, you have no, you haven't talked about this enough to say, okay, if it's, if we're currently paying 5%, and they're going to want us to pay 9%, we're just not going to be able to do it. Like, is there anything like that written down anywhere? Okay, well, just, I just hope so. I hope you guys are, being as responsible with my money as, you know, some of the most irresponsible adults I know, which they don't even spend double on value. I, I, please help it make sense. I, I just really hope you guys are doing more than what it appears right now, with this limited form that we have, no back and forth. Like, I just really do, because these numbers are outrageous. Millions and millions of dollars. You're talking enough to do so much for so many. And we honestly, the more social workers we get, the more suicides we get. Like, when are we going to start looking at, why are children's suicide rates going up? Depression, all these different things. We just get more and more social workers. It's obviously not the solution. That's not it. We need to invest in the family unit. We need to invest in individual families, so that way the families are strong, the children are strong, not just get more and more social, more and more workers, more buildings, 60 million here, 7, like, we could do so much better with this money. And I really hope you guys are looking at rates. Like, to say we don't know the rate, we don't have any window of what we'll accept and what we won't accept. Like, I hope that's just me speculating, and that's not the truth, but please, 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 don't let us see that we've gone up four points. We're going to refinance and pay four points more than we have been. Nobody does that in real life, not with their own money.
Larry Pittman, Bird Road, Concord. Well, can't see the top of the thing now, but I know, I noticed your statement of purpose or whatever up there had the word stewardship, or being good stewards, or something with that effect. Yeah. Leadership and visionary leadership, a vision of, gosh, money coming back in the officials' pockets, I guess, and good stewardship. You need to look that word up. Because spending double on a building and then having to spend all that money to debute it, or whatever you're doing, that ain't good stewardship. And please figure out, it ain't your money.
I know I'm operating off of limited information on the, the drawdown program, but I would echo what some of the other folks said, that purely doing a drawdown to rope in additional expense does not make sense if a rate is not favorable. And I assume that you all know that, right? Like, it's the reason that if you locked in a mortgage a few years ago at 2.8%, that you would quite frankly be pretty unintelligent to refinance right now, no matter how much extra money you were wanting to take on. So that needs to be considered with that. And I do think that if that purchase of a commercial real estate building for double its value is on the table, I think that needs to come off as part of the drawdown. Because, I mean, commercial real estate's in a bubble anyway. I'm in the private sector. There's a big reason that there's a push for getting folks back into the office and whatnot. It's because commercial real estate is tanking in value. So what you're potentially doing is financing a $42 million building that already isn't worth that, that's only going to continue to decrease. When commercial real estate crashes, it crashes very, very hard. And surely there isn't malicious intent by trying to push this through. I mean, I hope not. And you guys, you guys all live and, and work in the same area that we do. I mean, outside of here, you're sitting up a little higher than I am right now, but, I mean, we're all members of the community. So, I mean, at the end of the day, we're not so different. It's just you're all a little irritated with me right now because I've been up here three times. But I would just consider, I mean, you need to do what makes financial sense. It's okay to back out of a deal. I know you get used to me, especially coming up here and telling you everything that I think's going wrong. If you give me more than three minutes, I might could say something nice too, but I only get three minutes, so I have to focus on the mean things. But if you back out of a deal that doesn't make sense, I promise you, I will stand up here and I'll give you guys kudos in front of everybody. And I won't even feel bad about it. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
My name is Marty DiGiacomo. I'm out of Harrisburg, North Carolina. And I escaped communist Connecticut. And just like another guy here, he, he was very familiar with corruption. I'm not saying anybody's corrupt here. I'm just, I'm just saying that when I got out of Connecticut, the communist governor that came in there with an R next to his name, he said the way to get the, the state out of tax debt, out of debt, was not to raise taxes. The day after he got in, he doubled all the licensing fees, and he gave us an income tax, seven and a half percent. I lost three trucking jobs in one year due to the economy. We were getting ready to adopt kids, buy a house, and I said, honey, there's no future here. I see the same thing happening right here in Cabarrus County. I moved down here because there was opportunity here, and at that time, it was still southern. And I appreciated that a lot, being a Yankee. And I'll tell you what, there's all these people here talking, and I, I was not even aware of all this stuff going on. I just started getting involved. And I'm listening to all these people suffering, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a veteran, I'm, I'm old enough, I shouldn't be working. I just love to work. You know, I mean, I'm a trucker. I love trucking, okay? But here's the thing. Ever since I've been trucking, every bit of my expenses, all my taxes are going up. FET, FET came out, that's on everything. All these people here, they're struggling. I would say you guys really, really should think about, are you going to be able to face your own constituents, your own residents that you live with? Are you going to be able to look them in the eye? Because I think some of them, if, if you vote for this crap, they're, I mean, there may be some words, seeing you in a restaurant or something, and I'm not trying to put that kind of pressure on you. I'm just saying reality, you know? And like I said, man, I came out of Connecticut, I, I was so glad to get out of that state, and it's still four times communist now. And I hope that it doesn't turn this way, because what you're doing with this kind of money, increase in taxes, you are slamming the people here. Have a heart, because the Bible does say that, you know, you, you, you should make just laws, and God is not pleased with someone who makes unjust laws. And also, it does say to take care of the poor and needy. Hey, man, just regular, regular citizens here are suffering. I mean, my increases in trucking alone are just exponential. I'm just barely getting by. But you know what? There's people suffering more than me here, and I just, I just would like to encourage you guys, whoever you are, that are ready to vote this way. And you know, if there is any kind of greasing palms going on, I think it will be uncovered at some point, and I don't think it's going to come out good. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Laura Lindsey, Harrisburg. You guys are smart. We elected you for a reason. Tim, you know I love you. But it's been a disappointment in a lot of ways to watch this budget season. Y'all know better. Y'all know how to stand up. I've watched you do it. That's how you got elected. Realize that this is a horrible financial decision. $15,000 in campaign contributions were given to Quality Cabarrus by ACN. All you have to do is connect the dots. It doesn't match, it doesn't work, and this is a, this is a disgusting way to handle our taxpayer money. You've heard all of these people come out tonight and talk about how much they're suffering. It makes no sense to buy a building for $42 million that's valued at 26. Not only that, but then you're going to de-beautify it for DSS because they shouldn't have all the beauty and gold and granite inside the building. Well, what does that say about you, what you think about DSS? At least you could leave the building as it is and let them just move into the building with all of the pretty stuff in it. These are bad financial decisions that are going to affect us for a long time. Do the right thing. You still have time to do it. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in the public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, the attached in your agenda is a resolution, an installment finance contract, various other documents.
I've got one more question for you. I was asking you about how this came about. You said the building had been for sale for a number of years, and then, did we go back and approach them and say, we're interested? How did those conversations take place?
The, the original conversations, we decided that, the first time we- The original conversations, we decided that, the first time we were looking at it, which I don't remember the dates, but we had those conversations, the cost of the building was high. Then we also had the conversation internally and with our elected officials, is it, was it something, was it a type of a building that we wanted to take off the market? And the decision was that we did not want to at the time. So we continued to look for multiple, in multiple areas, for locations for a building that would be sufficient enough and large enough to house the entire department, Human Services. And we were never able to find one, so that we did go back and look to new construction. And the new construction, I don't have the exact number, Jim's still in here, I think it was over $100 million to build, a similar building of that type, to build new, was gonna cost $100 million. So our decision was to go back and look at the purchase price, and then to go in, and I'm not sure where the rumors or the comments, or wherever it is, that we're gonna dummy down the building, or ugly the building, or that type of thing, because our employees weren't suitable to work in that, or shouldn't be working in that. That's not the case. What those extra funds are gonna be is if we are able to purchase the building, it will be replacing roofs, replacing mechanical systems that are end of life, and that's pretty much it. I don't know if there's any gold in the building or not. There are some nice floors in there, that you would see in a Class A office space, but other than that, those, that $20 million is not to, to do anything but to make the building functionable again.
And how much were they asking for the building the first time, whenever, the first negotiation?
I don't, I don't recollect. That's been quite a while, I don't recall that.
Were there some negoti, what was their asking price when it was for sale?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Now, who are the broker, who are our brokers who were involved in making this deal happen?
Jim? I don't mean to put you on, oh, Kelly, I'm sorry, Kelly's here, sorry, yeah.
Is it we've been dealing with, not Donia?
Okay. And does he handle all of our, all the brokering deals, whenever we purchase property or building?
Most of the time.
Most of the time, okay. So he was our broker on this deal, okay?
Correct.
Was there any negotiation on the purchase price whenever all of this was going on? Maybe, maybe you can answer how much they were asking for it, or if you?
I came in late on the deal, so I don't know the details of the negotiations that had already been established by the time I was involved with that project.
Okay. Yeah. Well, we'll have to pull it up. I understand somebody said that the tax value was a certain amount, I mean, but tax value is not, is not market value.
No, it's not the market value, but, but whenever I looked at the tax value, I believe it was yesterday, or the day before, it was 23, maybe 26. I should've wrote it down, but it was in that neighborhood, so it was about half of, almost, not quite half of what we're gonna pay for, so.
Right. So, like I said, the tax value is not the market value.
And I completely understand that. It's the same way with whenever buying a home, you know? And now we're in a situation with the reevaluation, where we have some homes that are valued more than what the individual property owner could sell it for. So I certainly understand the difference between tax value, market value. I understand every bit of that. But we're still paying double, almost double of what the tax value is.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
Can I say something at the White House?
Uh, no, sir, the public hearing is closed.
The hearing's closed?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Looking at my notes on the, on the, on the ACN building, which we've been discussing this over some period of time, I think the last time we renewed the lease on the Human Services, current Human Services building, which is a former Kmart building, which we're paying in excess of $1 million a year, lease payments on that. The board expressed a desire to find a replacement facility for a couple of different reasons. Number one, the current facility is somewhat inadequate for the needs, it is not a good environment for our employees or our customers. There was a very strong consensus to find a replacement building before we had to renew that lease again. I believe there are two years left on that lease, it may be one year now, I'm not sure. So at that point, the second thing was, when, when the, that was supposed to be a temporary location, that happened prior to my tenure on the board, which began in 2012. They considered that to be the strongest area of need where the clients coming to the Human Services were located. Since that time, that has somewhat shifted, and they felt a need for a more centralized location that was closer to, more convenient for Concord and Kannapolis and the other municipalities. So they began looking at property in the Copperfield area. There was a piece of property that was identified as a potential location. A firm was hired to evaluate that property and come up with an estimate of construction costs for a facility on that building. The price that came back was a low of $85 million, a high of, I think, $130 million. That piece of property also would require construction of a parking deck in order to have adequate parking for it. As county manager mentioned, the ACN building had been looked at a number of years prior to that, and it was decided that that probably wasn't. Well, it wasn't decided it wasn't a suitable location. At that time, it was rumored that they had a prospect of another business that was going to move into the building. And so we felt like it was better to keep that building on the tax books and to provide jobs, so we stepped away from the inquiry at that time. That never materialized. A number of years passed, and the building continued to be, it was not vacant, I understand there are about 50 people, maybe, that worked there, but just a fraction of the number of people that originally worked there. Once we got back the estimates on a new facility of between 85 and $130 million, that building was still on the market. We discussed that, I think you were a part of those, those discussions. The broker that represented us was instructed to negotiate with them to see what the best price we could get on that building. After some period of time and some negotiations, $42 million was, $42 million was the price that was decided on. That was for the building, which was adequate to accommodate the Human Services Department. It also included two additional buildings, which I think they referred to as their call center, that are closer up to Copperfield, that would be appropriate for child visitation, child welfare department, which allowed for some visitation space and so forth. That, in addition to that, there was adequate parking already in place, and there was additional undeveloped property as part of the transaction that was adequate for the construction of the behavioral health facility that, that the county is building. That was determined to be a better, originally that was scheduled to be at the milestone location. It was determined that this would be a more desirable location for that facility due to its proximity to Atrium. Many of the clients that would be served at the behavioral health facility require medical clearance before they can be treated, and so that was a, there was a lot of synergy there between the close location of the hospital and that space. Once the building was evaluated, and I, I think the report is available to anybody that wants to see it, it was about a hundred-page report that evaluated the building, all of the mechanical systems, the roofs, et cetera. And there is a detailed list of everything that is to be done in the $20 million rehabilitation. As the manager mentioned earlier, that's end-of-life roof replacements, HVAC and mechanical system. I think one of the big-ticket items is the required renovation of the restrooms to meet ADA requirements. There is nothing in that proposal that has any plans to make the building appear less fancy or luxurious in any way. It's all structural and functional upgrades, not aesthetic downgrades. The, it also included the construction of a customer service counter and the entrance to the building, and the standard things that you would assume. There was some removal of some raised floors and some of the computer service center areas and that sort of thing, to make those areas functional. All of that could be accomplished for 50% of what it would cost to construct a new facility. So we could have built a very basic building, but we would've had to spend double the money of what we are spending to purchase this building. So those are the notes that I have on, on the history that I'm familiar with on that, that project.
From my understanding, the, the cost to construct a new building, the driving factor of the cost was because of a parking garage that would have to be put on that particular location that the county bought property for to build there. So, you know, if we didn't have to have the parking garage at that location, from my understanding, from the conversations we had, that was a driving factor.
I think the parking garage and the stormwater retention were the two biggest factors, and we did not purchase that property. We were just evaluating it.
So that wasn't the best, wasn't the best piece of property for them.
Location was, was just up the road, but the elevation changes in the property and the other issues that Chairman Morse was saying.
I think that some of the other, there were a number of other locations that were looked at as potential during that same period of time. I don't recall the specific geographic areas, but it was, they were unsuccessful in locating a piece of property where a facility could build, could be built less expensively than, than the proposal for this building. So at this time, and of course, the purchase of this building is just one portion of this financing. The other projects that were included in that are this, you know, and I would encourage Jim to correct me if I'm not explaining it correctly, but the draw program that occurred that we're now doing permanent financing on was for a number of different projects that have already been accomplished. It is my understanding that that draw program operates primarily like a construction loan would operate if you were building a house. The draw program is approved, as these projects are completed, we don't pay interest on any of that money until we draw it down from the program. Once those projects are completed, then, then we go out to market to get the best rate that we can on permanent financing, and then close out the draw program. Did I explain that correctly, Jim?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if there is a list of those projects, I know that we've discussed them in the past. I'm not sure if there is a list included in our agenda. This is a pretty lengthy bit of information.
I believe it's on page 132 of the book here, if I.
In the budget book.
If I am correct in that.
Did you say 132?
132 is what it looks like.
That might be in the, yeah, this is, are you in the work session book or the?
I'm in the budget book.
Oh, the budget book, yeah.
Yeah, 132, this shows, these are not itemized out. I don't, I don't think. Jim, can you help us out on that? The list, okay, the, on, on the list included in this was 67,500,000, which was the last portion of the courthouse, acquisition of the new social services facility, $39,800,000 for Arbrown McAllister Elementary School, which is now completed, $26,500,000 for Library and Active Living Center in Virginia Foal Park at Mount Pleasant, $17,768 for the EMS headquarters, which is now operational, $7.3 million for the emergency equipment warehouse and the ITS relocation, which is the project that's finished on Cabarrus Avenue, Roberta Road Middle School, $6.4 million, I think that's the last portion of that middle school, which has been in operation for about two years now, $5 million for multiple projects at Frank Lisk Park, $3.2 million for design services for the new Northwest High School replacement, 2.275 for the Northeast Cabarrus Radio Tower, that's part of public safety communications, acquisition of land for Virginia Foal Park, $1.6 million, parking and drive replacement at Mount Pleasant High School, $1.6. Then there's several, like, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 5 roof replacements at various schools. And these are all items that were approved in last year's budget. Yeah, and so this is just the permanent financing for those projects.
So I don't, I have no issue with refinancing our debt, as long as we're getting a better interest rate. I mean, this is pretty cut and dry, I have, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, and I don't think refinancing is the correct term. What, the draw program is temporary financing, and so that, like I said, it's just like a construction loan, this is just converting that temporary financing into permanent financing. Is that a fair explanation, Jim?
Well, so, right. So whenever, just like a construction loan, whenever you receive the construction loan, once you move into a fixed debt, you're refinancing a loan. I mean, so it is refinancing, but either way, if we can get, if we can get a lower interest rate on what we have financed, I'm all for that. I'm not for the purchase of the ACN building, so, just that, just that simple. I'm not for the purchase of the ACN building, so, just that simple.
So, based on that discussion, I would move that we approve the resolution that is attached to your agenda that provides for the permanent financing of the outlined projects. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a, the second by Commissioner Shu. Is there further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Tim, Lynn, aye vote, aye. Kenny, so that's, and all opposed vote, no.
No.
Okay, that motion passes four to one. We move now to the next item, which is for the library, a Cannon Foundation grant, and we're happy to have Kelly Sifford to talk about that item.
Thank you. We received this $58,000 grant from the Cannon Foundation. We need to place it into an expense line item in order to, we're gonna have to roll it over to next year's budget, obviously, but this will allow us to follow through with that and be able to expend the money in the next fiscal year.
Okay, and I think it states in here that this is for service enhancements in the children's library?
Correct.
Yeah.
We have a playboard that will be able to install the base in multiple libraries and move the top around so it stays fresh into the different libraries.
Great. Okay, commissioners, any questions on this item? Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will just say that thank you to the Cannon Foundation. They have been very strong supporters of our library system, as well as many other things, but most specifically, they have been very generous with our libraries, and we very much appreciate that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes unanimously. We move now to item four, which is adoption of the fiscal year 2025 budget. To summarize, the county manager presented the recommended budget for fiscal year 2025 to the Board of Commissioners on Monday, May 20, 2024. A public hearing was held on Monday, June 3, 2024, at 5:30 PM. The Cabarrus County Budget Ordinance consists of the General Fund, Community Investment Fund, Cabarrus Arena and Events Fund, Landfill Fund, 911 Emergency Telephone Fund, Health and Dental Insurance Fund, Workman's Compensation and Liability Fund, Fire Tax District Fund, Social Services Fund, Intergovernmental Fund, and Opioid Settlement Fund. So I will open the floor at this time for a motion or discussion.
Chairman Morris, I move to approve the proposed budget as outlined in the budget ordinance included in tonight's agenda and attached to this motion with the following changes. The county tax rate shall be established at 57.6 cents. From the surplus generated by this rate, $200,000 shall be allocated to establish a revolving loan fund for affordable housing. This fund will be administered by the Revolving Fund Council in cooperation with We Build Concord. Staff shall be directed to identify an additional 1.8 million to be added to the aforementioned $200,000, bringing the total for the revolving loan fund to $2 million. The source of this 1.8 million shall be funds designated for economic development incentives not expected to be used during the next fiscal year. These details regarding the establishment and administration of the revolving fund are subject to review and revision by the county attorney and county manager. I will have additional comments about the affordable housing initiative during the discussion of this motion. It is to be noted that all items included in the proposed budget included salary increases for public safety positions, salary study recommendations for non-classified Cabarrus County school system employees, and a 1% increase in teacher supplements will be funded in this budget. The reduction in the tax rate is a result of eliminating the reserves or surpluses that were recommended to offset future-year deficits. The ordinance includes all fire district tax rates, which are set in every instance as requested by the respective departments. Mr. Chairman, upon receiving a second to my motion, I will give you a written copy of my motion to be provided to the clerk.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Wortman, seconded by Commissioner Shu, and I will now open the floor for discussion on the motion.
Commissioner Wortman, could I have you repeat that, just to make sure I?
Hey, I'm gonna give you, I read it word for word from what I have here, so if you'll pass that down.
You'll pass one down to the clerk, and here's one for you.
Do you want me to read it again?
And while you're reading that, Commissioner Meesmer, is it okay if I go ahead and give some comments on the affordable housing part while you're reading that? I wanted to begin my comments with information by reading from a recent WCNC report on the Rebuilders Campus that Cabarrus County supported. It says Concord and Cabarrus County are among the fastest-growing areas in the Charlotte region. The economy is thriving and business is growing, and we have tremendous growth and migration, stated Ed Hosack, CEO of Cooperative Christian Ministry. But at times, that comes with a price. The cost of renting has skyrocketed, and there are not enough affordable places to live. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, over the last decade, Concord has grown a staggering 33%, making it one of the state's largest cities. Right now, it shows no signs of slowing down. The average rent in Concord is over $1,500, according to Rent Cafe. Cabarrus County has the highest year-over-year rental increase rates in the state of North Carolina, higher than Charlotte, Ed Hosack said. With the growth, Concord and Cabarrus County are working to create housing opportunities for residents. The city of Concord has created more affordable units over the last few years and passed zoning changes that allow tiny homes to be built. The cities of Concord and Kannapolis have both taken steps to address this situation, and with this low-interest revolving construction fund, Cabarrus County will have an opportunity to help citizens in all of our municipalities, as well as unincorporated areas of the county. This is an investment to try and help address the issues of homeless children in our school system and associated costs in transportation of children with no permanent place of residence. People with stable housing are much less likely to spend time in our detention facility and to be involved with public assistance program. This is our opportunity to not give people a hand out, but to give people a hand up.
Before I would vote on this motion, I wanted to turn to Commissioner Meesmer. I think at our June 16 meeting of last year, when we approved the last budget, you asked for a commitment from the board to adopt a revenue-neutral tax rate after reevaluation. Of course, at that time, we did not know what the results of that would be, and so I wanted to hear your plan as to how we can adopt a revenue-neutral tax rate after a year has elapsed.
Well, it's only taken you about a year to ask me that question. I think since I came on this board two years ago, one of the first things I discussed on this board was the reevaluation and what was coming down the pike. Whenever, it was the bad ti, we had went over this with the reevaluation from the beginning. When I first got here, I said we need to hold off the reevaluation for a couple of years to while the real estate market subsides, whenever it basically will, you know, just settle down. We did it during the toughest ti, we did it during the hottest market in the history of Cabarrus County, and whenever people were paying far more, now maybe not double, but they were paying far more than what their tax value is. Now we have seen the market cool off. So I have, for two years, I have been saying that this is coming down, and nobody has prepared. Businesses went on like normal. Things have continued. You guys looked at me like I had two heads. And last year, yes, the budget did not include any new tax increases, but I knew this year it was going to be a money grab with this reevaluation. As property values have increased, it's a way for local governments to grab the money to increase taxes. Now, I will say, you know, this, we, at our last meeting two weeks ago, there was a presentation, it was up on the screen, people watched it, hearing the audience, and it was tried, and they tried to sell this tax increase as a tax savings to the local citizen by saying that cutting the rate, and that is true. The rate is gonna be cut. However, they're not telling you that's a 10-cent property tax rate increase. So whenever it's trying to be sold as a savings, that's a problem, and that's where it comes back to transparency. So you should have been asking me this question. We started the budget back in February. We've had some discussions. If you wanted to work with me, if the county manager wanted to work with me, you'd be talking to me before tonight. The manager, the county manager invited me into his office to discuss the budget, and I was invited in Friday of last week. This budget has been going on for months, so if anybody on this board wanted to work with me, you would have asked me before now. So to answer your question about the revenue-neutral, if we go revenue-neutral and the county government brings in the same amount of revenue as we did the previous year, we can continue to fund the county government with no interruptions. I'm not wanting to cut services. I'm not wanting to cut jobs. I'm not trying to play politics with county employees' jobs, just the way you guys do. Whenever you say this about you're gonna bring the rate down, oh, all of a sudden, which ambulance are you gonna cut? Which police deputies can get laid off? None of that's gonna happen, and you try to pin that on me, and it absolutely is not the case. It's not true. If we bring in the same amount of revenue as we did last year, we can continue county government the way it is now. But a way to go revenue-neutral is not taking out $350 million, almost, well, almost $400 million in debt now with this budget cycle. You know, we just, so you want to ask me how to go revenue-neutral, well, you just voted to buy one of the most expensive office-based buildings in this county. This is how we're not able to go revenue-neutral. This is how you have bloated the budget for your 12 years on this board. So I'm gonna tell you that, you know, you can look at me and ask me how to go revenue-neutral, but with all the decisions that you have made over the last 12 years, it puts us in a tough position. But we most certainly could go revenue-neutral without touching any job, any service, without taking on this additional debt. Just imagine how much that we could pay, how much more we could pay our county employees, how much more we could pay the police officers who serve this community, who protect us each day, without buying that ACN building, without spending the 300 or 400 million dollars in new debt. Just imagine how we could really take care of them.
And so I would go a little further. The list of projects, now you're talking about this motion that we just voted on, right? Just now?
You just asked, you just asked me about how I would go revenue-neutral.
Exactly, and I, and you did not give me any examples of how you would do that. You talked about, you talked about the debt that we just incurred, which these are all for projects that have already been completed.
Not that one. The ACN building is a new purchase. Don't look at that list. The ACN building is a new purchase. This board just voted to buy that building for $44 million, or whatever, 42 million, okay. So what are you asking me? I don't, I don't understand. Like I said, it's a combination of decision.
The other items on that list are projects that have already been completed, like Roberta Road Middle School and R. Brown McAllister Elementary School.
That is separate from what is being proposed. Well, for instance, we'll go down this, we'll go down this route. The school system sold the Cabarrus County Commission Board on a replacement school, and that's what it's categorized, I believe, in our budget here, is a replacement school. And it was sold to us as a replacement for Beverly Hills and Coltrum Web. Now, since then, I believe the school system has made a decision to redistrict the students from Beverly Hills Elementary to permanently redistrict them to other schools, and it's not gonna be a combined Beverly Hills-Coltrum Web Elementary already. But we have heard time and time again from the school system that capacity is their number-one issue, that that is the issue that is just burning, you know, burning on their front burner. That's what the problem, that's what the biggest issue is. But they come, they decide to, they vote to shut down a school, losing that capacity, and try to, and then now the decision is just to rebuild Coltrum Web and it not be in a combined school, like it was sold on to us from the beginning. But now, we're gonna go out and spend over $50 million on replacing a school that does not address capacity issues. So now you tell me how that's the best financial, best financial decision for our county taxpayer, is whenever we could take that money, build a school, and alleviate the capacity issues that's going on in the school system, but instead, we're just gonna spend over $50 million to demolish a school that is not in that bad of shape and just replace it. So there, you know, that's a, that's the number-one thing, the ACN building. I've not, I've not talked to one taxpayer or one citizen of this county that has told me the ACN building was a good deal for the taxpayer. I've had, I've had discussions with a lot of taxpayers around the county, and not one said, you know what, that's a, that was a great decision. You guys, you guys should buy the ACN building. I've not had one tell me that. You know, I, you know, I'm just telling you that if you wanted to work with me, you would have already reached out to me before tonight, so.
I think that, I don't think that's what my question was. My question was, what is the plan, how we would go revenue-neutral? And if you're telling me that you can go revenue-neutral without eliminating any of these items, any items, in the budget, which is what it sounds like you're saying, then I would be interested to, I mean, I would, if you knew that information, I would think you would be telling me that every month for the past 12 months. Now, at one point during that process, I think, I said, well, what would you propose to cut to accomplish that? And your answer was, I haven't said anything about cutting anything. You're the one that mentioned something about cutting.
That's exactly right. You're the only one that keeps talking about that. I have not proposed a program cut or job cuts on this. If we bring in the same exact revenue as we did last year, there is no cuts on that. And we need to allow, like I said at the last meeting, we need to reevaluate our county finances after this reevaluation. We have this reevaluation that, like I said, well, you've heard it from the folks. A lot of people are not gonna be able to afford this tax increase. A lot of folks are not gonna be able, the taxpayer is not gonna be able to afford this tax increase, and we're gonna have a lot of delinquent taxpayers, and how are we going to, you know, how are we gonna be able to fund these items that you're taking the debt out? I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna go over the scenario that I did last time, so I want this to resonate with you and the taxpayers. So the median home in Cabarrus County would be $350,000. At a 74-cent tax rate, you're paying $2,590 a year in just county property tax. Now, the average residential property went up by 60%, so that brings your value up to 560. At a 60-cent rate, you're paying 3360, so that's $770 more a year that that property owner is gonna be paying just in county property taxes. That doesn't, that doesn't account for the homeowner's insurance that's increasing, if you live in a city or municipality, if they're increasing their rate. So we're talking, people are gonna be paying thousands of dollars more a year, and people just can't afford that. People just really cannot afford that. And to take out debt... And to take out debt in this budget cycle and tie the hands of a future board is absolutely irresponsible and playing politics with, playing politics with taxpayer dollars. So, you know, this, like I said, this is being sold as a tax, this is being sold as a tax cut. It may be a tax rate cut, but in reality, it's one of the biggest tax increases in the history of Cabarrus County. We hear, we hear about the affordable housing crisis. We hear about it every meeting. They're here tonight. This proposed budget is throwing gasoline on that fire, is throwing gasoline on that fire. With the pay increases that we, that we have given, let's say, a teacher, she gets a 1% supplement salary increase in this budget year. That's not even enough to cover her new tax bill. That's not enough to cover the additional money she's going to be paying, or he or she, I should say, that that teacher will be paying in property tax. So essentially, it's just a system where, okay, we're going to give, we're going to give increase in salaries, which, hey, I'm for. Let's give increase in salaries. But then, it's typical government to turn around and say, you got to feed it back into the system, because that's exactly what's happening. A lot of these pay increases are not going to pay their increased property tax bill.
And so you are telling me that if we set a tax rate that brings in the exact same amount of revenue that came in last year, we can fund everything, including the?
We can fund the county government as is now. You know you got your three votes. You know what, you know you've had it. That's the reason you've not tried to work with me this whole time. And, you know, I've got my opinions. You can vote to increase the taxes on our taxpayer, on our local citizen, have people evicted from their homes, people evicted from rent, because this is, like I said, this is, we have the affordable housing crisis, and this is throwing gasoline on the fire by increasing taxes.
And so I'll ask you this question. Have you attempted to, to work with or to create a plan, not with me, but with any other commissioner on this board? Have you come forward with a proposal and tried to explain it, or sell it, or?
I've done that for two years. Where have you been for two years? For two years, I have sat on this board, I have sat on this board and tried to make the best financial decisions that I feel is best for the taxpayer. And if you have not noticed that in the last two year, or year and a half that you've been serving with me, I don't know what to tell you.
Well, I will tell you that I have not noticed that, and I will, you know, hate to, we've got several different issues here, but I think your comment was, and quite honestly, you know, I think you're saying the things that you think people want to hear you say. And just like your comments about delaying the revaluation, which we've had that discussion multiple times, the statute, general statutes for the state of North Carolina, 105-286.
Yes, we've been through every bit of this.
Establishes the time for revaluation. You have received the copy of the letter that says, please accept this letter as notification that Cabarrus County must conduct a reappraisal no later than January 1, 2025. That means we would be in the midst of the appraisal portion of that process right now, where we were one year ago today. When you look at the data, and this, this first one is from Canopy, which is the MLS service that serves this entire region. Their report says that year-over-year change in median sales price is plus 3.9 percent. That's how much the prices have gone up this year. If you look at a newsletter from a local realtor, it says, historically, our area sees 3% to 5% appreciation during a normal year when we aren't in a market boom or bust. In my opinion, we'll see approximately 7% appreciation on home values this year. And then he goes on to cite some examples of a house he sold on Pitt School Road and so forth. Another one says, nationally, the median existing home price, now, that's nationally, so that's not specific to Cabarrus County, reached $407,600 as of last measure, a 5.7 percent increase from the same period last year. Then, if you look at the sales report for all the sales that have occurred in Cabarrus County during the, well, this is from January 1 to June 13, there have been 1,035 sales in Cabarrus County. And they're detailed, and I didn't print the whole thing out, because it's like 87 pages. But it details every single transaction and compares the sales tax to the current valuation after the revaluation. And so the mean ratio percentage of those sales is 95.827. If it were, and if I explain this incorrectly, I hope somebody will correct me, but if, if every house that's sold, sold for exactly the tax value that's currently on it after the revaluation, that would be 100 percent. So it's selling, they're selling for, if you take 95% of what they sell for, that's the tax.
95% of the homes being sold now are being sold?
No. No, 95% of the price.
Okay.
So that means the houses are being sold for 4.2% higher than tax value, when you average all 1,035 sales.
So only four, only 4% over tax value? And the new tax values have not kicked in until we make this vote now?
No, no, this is the new tax values. The new tax values kicked in when the revaluation notices went out. Am I correct about that?
I think that is correct. That is correct?
And so the point is, if we had waited one year, then we would be in that appraisal process now, and those values, depending on which one of these newsletters you listen to, and this is the MLS folks, so they, I mean, they keep pretty, theirs is 3.9%, and then the other range was 7%. So I don't see how we would have benefited the taxpayers to wait a year when the values were 4% higher than last year.
So how many appeals have we, have we had, would you say?
We're still in the appeal process. The initial, excuse me, informal appeals, we had right at 5% of properties made an appeal.
Okay. And what is typically the appeal percentage?
It varies every year. This is probably one of the larger we've had. I think typically, we'd see about 3% to 4%. So it's increased over previous years because of the increase in value that we saw.
Okay. And what percentage of those appeals have actually been, their value was lowered? Do you have?
I don't have specific numbers. I can get those for you pretty easily. We're working on compiling.
There has been significant of that. Well, okay. I'm just curious, because I mean, I've heard a number of people say that there's, you know, it's been mostly seniors have said that theirs have been lowered whenever they appealed. So I just wanted some.
Out of, I'd say 40 to 50%, maybe saw some adjustment in the appeal process. Some of that was a decrease, some was an increase. There was probably half that had no change after our review, so.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Now, I want to ask about this, Commissioner Wortman, I got a couple of questions, or, well, this could be for county management. Tax rate at 57.6, how does that fit in with your budget proposal of the 60 cent? If we're going to drop it, yeah, go ahead.
With the 57.6, that left us with the two, it left us with a surplus of 210,000. The 200 that goes to the affordable housing and reallocating the economic, that leaves the county with a $10,000 surplus.
In this?
And in all the emails we got, and we all got them, I did not pledge to go revenue neutral, but I pledged to get it as low as I can comfortably and still run the county. And that's why I did. And the only thing I will say, we've always talked respectfully. You know, you made the comment Chairman Morris has his three. Nobody owns me. I've always made my own decisions. A lot of times, it lines up, but you and I've talked. I'm not a guaranteed vote for anybody, I think for myself. And so that's why I made this. At the end of the day, Commissioner Schu and I are going to be the ones, because Chairman Morris is gone, and Commissioner Fur is gone. So at the end of the day, it's going to be us and whoever else comes on. So that's why I made this motion.
Okay, and now?
I just wanted to clear that up.
I understand. I appreciate that. The 1.8 million dollars that you, that, is that the 1.8 million dollars for?
It's a placeholder for an economic development grant that's not going to be used. From my understanding, that, I believe that's the Eli Lilly one possibly, is that correct, Mike?
I don't know the exact one.
But there's a placeholder, there's a placeholder in that for 1.8. And that's why, with that coupled with the 200, out of the 210,000, we'll give the 2 million, and that's the one-time revolving loan.
And, Mike, I'm assuming that you probably have been aware of this proposal. Is that correct?
Not all the details, sir.
But you, but you've been aware of it, maybe not the details, but?
My questions, when I asked, I asked, there were certain things I wanted to fund. I wanted to make sure that we got the sheriff's office. I know it ended up being 10.6.
Yeah, 10.6.
Compared to 9. I was fine with that. I understand that the county contracts were already in place. I was fine funding that the first time. So my important ones, where I wanted the sheriff's office funded, the 1% teacher supplement, and obviously Kannapolis gets, whatever we give, Cabarrus, Kannapolis gets. I always, it's on the paper, classified or non-classified, from my understanding, that's the mechanics, the janitors, custodians, that type of staff that the school board had talked about with that increase. And then there was some reclassification of employees. So when I asked Mike, when I asked County Manager Downs, I wanted to make sure, how low could we get this? From my understanding, $10,000 isn't comfortable, but it is what it is. To me, I can still fund this. It's $10,000, you're going to have to make it work. So that's where, that's where that comes from.
Okay. And now, for the manager, so you're comfortable that everything, so your proposal was a 60 cent tax rate, and you're comfortable that we can fund all of your proposals at 57.6?
That, that's what the math is showing, yes. Yes, it's the additional between the proposed rate and the 60 cent rate was to establish a surplus in the first two years that would, that would fund the following two years, year three and four, and therefore, that would keep us a steady tax rate for four years.
So if we adopt all of your proposals and go with the 57.6 rate, and whenever I say adopting these proposals, that's the new debt, new positions, expanded, well, expanded county budget, budget, I'll say, then we're going to have a deficit?
$22 million next year.
Yeah.
And so that's where?
I can't imagine how responsible it would be to adopt an increased budget and know that we're going to have a $22 million deficit. I don't, I don't, I don't see the logic.
Where mine came from is I couldn't support any, an $11 million increase after what we've heard from the people. I would like to thank County Manager Downs and the staff, that they did what they were asked. That 60 cent tax rate gives a solid tax rate for the next four years. What I was not comfortable with was an additional 11, was it 11 million? That I was not comfortable with.
11 million for what? What was that?
It would have been an additional surplus this year, additional surplus next year, and that would cover the deficit on year three and four.
Okay. Now, does this cover the additional fund balance that would be required from the state to have and holding for emergencies? What we're required to have a percentage of our budget held back with this 57.6?
Yes.
Be able to fund that as well?
Yep, yep, yes.
So if we're able to fund all of your proposals at 60 cent, and now we're able to fund them all at 57.6, where was that additional revenue going during the surplus?
The surplus was going into the bank to, for the first two years, to fund the overages on the next, year three and four.
And my thought of looking at, which we've always talked about, you know where I stand, I'd rather take it on next year and figure out than instead take it on 11 million extra from them this year. That's where mine came from.
Well, I mean, adopting all of the county manager's proposals in the expanded budget and doing that is, like I said, it is tying the hands of a future board. I mean, that's exactly what all of this proposal is, is to tie the hands of a future board before, and I know that may not be your intentions, but before we have a manager that's going to retire, and we have a chairman that's going to be leaving. All of this proposal is to tie the hands of a future county commission board. So they'll either have to raise taxes, or they'll either have to completely, you know, cut out, cut out something. And, you know, I'm not saying that we, you know, we can run an efficient government and not have to just gut a budget. But as I said, all of these proposals, there's an intended purpose behind that. And like I said, it's playing politics with taxpayer dollars, so.
I would disagree with what you just said. And of course, we've been mixing up debt issues here. The issue that we discussed before was things that have been approved in previous years. The projects that you mentioned at our last meeting were all projects that, that were, I think you said, unprecedented level of debt to tie the hand of a future board. All of those projects, with the exception of two community college projects, which had not come in at that time, are listed on this handout that we discussed at our annual retreat on February 23rd and 24th of this year. That was prior to the primary being held. So I'm not sure how you can say that that is playing politics as a result of the outcome of the election, because all these projects are listed on the sheet that was handed out at the retreat.
Yeah. Well, maybe you had promised somebody a project. How do I know? But maybe that was proposed, and then at the retreat, and you know this, you've been here 12, everything, every request under the sun will come to the county commissioners. Every request under the sun comes to this board, to county staff. Because of course, anyone, whether it's a department, or whether it's RCCC that needs a building, Cabarrus County Schools, whoever it may be that needs something, you know, it's a, it's an ask, hey, come on in and ask. That doesn't mean that that doesn't get changed from the retreat to now. And like I said, if you, you or county management, Mike, really wanted to work with me, you would have called me since the retreat and said, hey, let's work on some of this.
Did you call me?
No, I didn't. But you're chairman of this board. It's your responsibility to communicate with your board members. And yes, I could have reached out to county management and said, hey, let's, you know, let me come in. But I know that, you know, there's staff here that is paid to do a daily job. We're part-time county commissioners. So if somebody wants to work with me? So if somebody wants to work with me, they're gonna call me in and talk to me. But like I said, it's, you know, enough, there's been zero conversation since the retreat about it. Anyway, I have my opinion, you have yours.
You expressed any concerns to anyone about any of these projects on this list?
Like I said, for two years on this board, I have, I have expressed my concerns, and if you don't understand how I feel and what my concerns have been for two years, then I don't know where you've been. I don't, I don't even know, I don't even know how to communicate with you on that. If you cannot realize how my opinions have been for the last two years I've served on this board, I, I don't, I don't know where your head's been, then.
Well, I, I mean, I guess I'll use as an example, you know, talking about the budget, you know, and that, that, that you can supply everything that, well, we'll, we'll talk about expansion. You know, if you, if you go back and look at, at the budget books that, that we have, I think this is probably our budget, budget meeting, and you go back and you look at the, the school systems, every single one of the items, let's see, that's Kannapolis City Schools, I think Cabarrus County Schools had it spelled out, in their continuation budget, so they went through what, what their current expenditure was this year for every different category, electric services, natural gas services, the, all, all those itemized things. And so what it cost last year, and what they're projected, and on most of these, their projected inflation rate, they used three percent on some of the personnel costs, but on most of these utilities, two-four, two-point-four percent increases, those kind of things. And, and so, I mean, obviously, if it costs the individual, you know, one example that somebody used to me, when I really hadn't thought about, was the food for the, the people that reside in the detention facility across the street. You know, we, we're required by law to, to feed them. And I think most people, most citizens think the people that are in the detention center should be there. That, I mean, I guess the alternative would be, and that, you know, I don't think we even have this luxury, we're required by law to provide a detention facility for people that break the law, and we're required to feed them. Well, the food that we feed them is costing more this year. So, you know, all of these expenses that have increased, and then when, when we talked about the salary study for public safety employees, correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory tells me that we had consensus amongst this entire board, that everybody approved of that salary study, which made those, the pay for those positions competitive with other surrounding departments in there. You know, we went through all the methodology of how they came up with those figures. And so you were in favor of that at ten million dollars. How do we cover those?
About six million at that time, what we were told in that meeting. Because it was about nine, it was nine million, and then I brought up the fact that we're not gonna be paying overtime, we're not gonna be, that the municipalities are gonna be picking up their portion to contribute that, and it was never told to us it was gonna be ten-point-six in the end. There was gonna be a tick, ten-point-six million impact on the budget. We had talked about it, it was gonna be around six. But anyway, yes, I supported that. But, you know, we're, I understand that expenses are going up, we're all experiencing that. But in that budget, the true revenue rate's fifty cents, a revenue neutral, where you adjust for inflation, and you still call it revenue neutral, is fifty-two. And then, so?
I don't think that's in just for inflation, I think that is, I believe that's anticipated, that's what the state formula allows for growth.
I've heard it saying just for inflation, whatever, for growth, but we have all the natural growth in the county already that we're seeing, that it must not be paying for itself. Each building that pops up or on each corner is paying a property tax, well, unless they were fortunate enough to get a tax break from this board. But all of the buildings that we're seeing pop up in the county, whether it's home or apartments or businesses, those folks are paying property tax. Like I said, unless they received a, a break. So, you know, that money is used to pay for additional expenses. I mean, that's, that's the way it goes. You know, but, but just so everybody's aware, you know, I've said, I've said what I gotta say, I'm not gonna debate you all night long. Like I said, if you don't know where I've been in the la, if you don't know what my thought process has been last year and a half, then I don't know what to tell you. But this, this is essentially a eight to, well, at a sixty-cent proposal, it's an eight-to-ten-cent property tax rate increase on local citizen. And so I think there's not enough emphasis made on whether it's a fifty-seven-cent rate or a sixty-cent rate of how much additional our local taxpayer is gonna pay. How much additionally they're gonna pay in property taxes. And whatever raises we gave, they're gonna turn the, the county employees, depending on how much of their salary, what their salary is, but like I said, we'll go with the teacher, one-percent teacher supplement pay, they're gonna turn around and pay every bit of that back in property tax, so.
Commissioner Maysmar, with this proposal, I just also, just so you know, it talks about the revolving, the fund, the council, just so you know, that council makes up Habitat, CCM, the county does have a seat at the table for that, so there will be some oversight as to how that works. So I just wanted to put that out there to you as well.
Now, this one, the, and I may have already asked this, but the one-point-eight million is, you said placeholder in the budget for twenty-twenty-five?
For economic.
For twenty-twenty-five, okay. Now, what about whenever, well, then that's whenever we get into next year, we're gonna have the deficits if we adopt all the proposals.
I just wanted, there's gonna be representation. There's gonna be representation from all the, the local people helping out with that, so just wanted to put that out.
Yes, sir.
Maybe it broke.
There you go. It's coming on. It's the little red light on there, front.
There you go.
Oh, I can't see it. Oh, I got it now. Well, this is interesting. This is my first dealings with the, the county budget. I think I may have done the school systems about ten or eleven times, and it was nothing like this. These two gentlemen here, they're, they're, they're both right and they're both wrong. I've been on here now, I think it'll be a year next month, and that deal there is, is never gonna change. I mean, we've heard the same comments for a year. I mean, you're right, Chris, we've been, I, I've known where you stood for a year. I've known where Steve has, has stood for a year. If anyone thinks that, that my mind was made up before I ever got up here, you're mistakenly I was on vacation last week, I read this book multiple times. I've always made decisions, people that know me, that followed the school board activities and votes over the years, they know that, a lot of times I vote for what I think's right. I vote for my heart, I vote from doing research, talking to people, and more, most importantly, I pray about everything. So, any decision I make, and right, right now, if I had to vote, like, you, you asking me right this second what I'm gonna vote, I can't tell you. I'm waiting on the good Lord to tell me here real soon to which direction I need to go. So, I just, yeah, I mean, we, I've sat up here for the last three meetings, no, I don't say a whole lot, I never have. I listen. I think a good board member, they don't wait till they get to this setting to ask all the questions to the staff. You do it before you get here. That's the way I've done for my eleven, twelve years in, in politics. I ask my questions in advance, I have my answers, so a lot of times there's no need to keep, you know, asking the questions when I already know the answers. And I do know this has been live streamed and whatever, and, and the public, you know, they have a right to, to know what people think. But, yeah, I've probably changed my mind five times today. You know, on my way up here, I had a, what I was gonna do, you know, it's kinda strange. My wife, she, she doesn't get into politics at all, but, you know, something that's important, you know, you have to have somebody you really trust to, to you can run things by, and, and we've, we've talked about it for the last week on vacation, talked about it today, but you know, the real neat thing is, my mom would be ninety-one in September, she's still alive, and she's staying with me this week. So guess if I got to run all my questions by a ninety-one-year-old lady today, to get her thoughts and, you know, you know, they got wisdom that we don't have. So, just, I just wanted to clear one thing, that, you know, my mind's not made up, they don't influence me. You guys speaking, I listen to you, but I'm not threatened by what you, what you say or that, I'm, I make my own choice. I've made some, I've had to make some tough choices over, especially since COVID. You know, I was on the right side, I think, of COVID. I fought for the kids to go to school, I fought for it to be mask optional, that's the way I stood on that. The way I stand on this budget right now, we'll, we'll just, we'll figure it out in a few minutes. But I just wanna let you know that, yeah, I may sit here, and, you know, I don't ask a lot of questions, but I have asked questions, I just don't do it here. So that's really the, the only thing I want to clear up. And I respect each person up here, and, I mean, if there's been any political gain by this, I wish somebody would let me have some of it. I'm just kidding. But I don't think none of that goes on. I know there's a lot of accusations that, that, that take place, but, you know, I haven't, in my year here, I, I haven't have, this staff and, and Mr. Downs have been nothing but transparent to me, every question, they invite me to, and if you got any questions, let us know. So I just wanted to just let you, you people know, and I appreciate each, each one of you that come up here and speak. It, it's, it's important, and that's your right, and I, you know, you may not always agree with me, and I may not agree with you guys, but I certainly appreciate it. So, thanks.
Okay, other discussion. Commissioner Shu, are you still hearing us okay?
Yes, yes, I'm still here, and I, I didn't wanna interrupt anybody else, but, you know, I do have a few comments that I wanna make to the viewing audience, as well as those that sent attendance there tonight. First off, as you can tell, I'm kicked back at home in my recliner, I had a major surgery two weeks ago, and so I'm trying to get recovered from that. But going to the budget and these discussions that we've had tonight, one of the things that I found that seemed to be most dominant about all of the things that were said, they talk about transparency, they talk about, we can do this and we can do that, and I know that we do have limitations, we have certain mandated services and, and things that are mandated, that we have to cover before we cover anything else. But one of the main problems that I have found is either disinformation or misinformation. And I know that, just like, for example, the ACN building, we talked about that a number of years ago. And I remember when it first came up for discussion, I was very adamant, and the county manager and other commissioners that was on the board at that time will verify that I said, no, I don't think that that building would be adequate for what we're wanting to do. We looked at a number of other buildings, one of them being the Sears building, because they, you know, as you know, Sears closed down, but there wasn't adequate parking, it was gonna require a lot of construction to make it usable, and looked at several other pieces of property. And so we totally bypassed the ACN building. And then we decided that we would try to find a piece of property in that general proximity that would be closer to the hospital, bring it closer down to the center of the county versus being way up there, almost in Rowan County, which makes it difficult for our Midland and our Mount Pleasant and even different parts of Harrisburg residents to do their business there. So at that time, we had Kyle Billifer, at the time, you know, was our asset management infrastructure director. He found this piece of property that was up on Copperfield, and it was an excellent location. It wasn't on the main drag there, but it was one street over from that, but it was gonna require extensive site development. It would have to have a parking garage, and then the building itself to supply the basic things that we already had at the DHS building now, and it was gonna be close to a hundred and thirty million dollars. Well, at that time, I made, I remember making the comment to the county manager, that I think that the ACN building is beginning to look a little bit more attractive now than it did because of the, the cost to put a building at, in that same area. So the rest of the board agreed with that and decided to move in the direction to try to negotiate a price for the ACN building. Now, I, I stand to be corrected, because it's been a pretty good while since we've done this, but I think the asking price, and Chairman Morris, you might remember better, or maybe even might, but I think the asking price for that building was forty-eight million. And we negotiated it down to forty-two million. But, you know, there's got to be a lot of changes made to that building, nothing to do with the cosmetics, although I think that's a fairly expensive-looking DHS building, in my opinion, but for fifty percent of the price to build a new one, we could live with that. But there's gonna have to be ADA compliant changes made to it, and different things that's gonna have to be done. The HVACs are at the end of their life, you know, roofs are at the end of their life, but we can put money into that building and have a near, a near new structure. But the, you know, I've heard all kinds of things tonight about transparency. That's one of the things that, that I was very adamant about when, when I became a board member in two thousand and fourteen, was we've got to let the people know, by all means, let the people know, give them a chance. And we do everything that we know to do to get people involved, and just like the, the vote for the primary, we had around twenty percent of the registered voters come out and vote to, for the people they wanted. And then out of that, when we have public hearings and things like that, you might have four or five people show up. I don't know what more to do to get people involved. It's sort of like a bunch of Baptists, I guess, you feed them, they'll go. But, you know, we don't, obviously, we don't do that. But I, I've studied this over, and I think that County Manager Downs, as always, has done an excellent job. It's not what he wanted, but, you know, it's not what we wanted either, because we wanted a lower rate. I was hoping to see the rate go below fifty-five, but the way it turned out, fifty-seven, six, is about as good as we gonna get. And I don't think that's gonna send anybody to the poorhouse, not that we want to pay more taxes than we already do. I for sure don't. I'm a seventy-year-old retired veteran, and I don't need to be paying no more taxes. But, you know, when my house went up over a hundred percent, I wouldn't sell it for that. So, you know, you're not gonna get nothing for free. But anyway, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have any, any major comments, other than just those few things, but I just wanted to drive home the transparency. We work hard on that, and disinformation and misinformation, and it, it's caused a lot of outrage in the community, but a lot of that stuff's not even, not even true. But anyway, I, I appreciate you listening to me for this couple of minutes, and I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. We do have a motion on the floor, made by Commissioner Wortman. Clerk has a copy of it, which is to adopt the budget ordinance as attached to our agenda, and you gave me a copy. and you gave me a copy and then I'm establishing the tax rate at fifty-seven point six cents, which I think to be very transparent is four-point-nine-five cents above revenue neutral, if my math is correct.
True, true revenue neutral's fifty, just so we're aware.
Legal revenue nu, neutral as is prescribed in the statutes is what I'm referring to. And then, of course, you've mentioned the establishment of the Affordable Housing Fund. Does anybody have any questions about the motion? It's been so long since it was, ago since it was made.
Can I say something, which, I don't know if now's the right time, but it is what it is. But my, my term will be up in November, I think, third week in November. I will be moving out of county. I will be getting, moving out into country to get away from people. So it, it would be wrong of me to vote for a tax increase of whether, with, however way you put it. It'd be wrong for me to vote for that and then leave. So I will be voting no.
Okay.
But that's pretty much, I want to be clear, that, that's the reason. Nothing wrong here. I think his proposal is absolutely probably the best thing that we can do, but, you know, to me, the, the right thing for me to do.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes three to two. And that is the last item of business on our agenda tonight. So at this time, we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. Does anyone have anything? Okay, then we will move to general comments by board members, and I'll open up the floor for those. Okay, hearing no one. We do have need of a closed session tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A five and six for discussion of acquisition of real property and personnel issues. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you all for joining us.